Good morning. Welcome to the October 2nd, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Sunset Beach Planning Board. Seeing we have a quorum, I will call to order and have the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, first item before, first, well, first of all, let me, before we get to the conflict of interests, welcome our new member to the planning board, Mr. Mike Bowman.
Thank you.
Uh, he was sworn in this morning, uh, before the meeting, so, Mike, just to break you in a little bit, uh, can you just give us a brief, tell us, uh, some of your high points of you? And, and your interest in joining the planning board before we move on to the regular agenda.
Okay. Um, well, my background, I'm from Mount Airy. Most people know that as Mayberry. And, uh, worked for a company for forty-two years there, uh, Renfro Corporation. We made socks. And, uh, I retired, uh, eight years ago as the Executive VP of Operations. Worldwide, so, uh, traveled internationally a lot, built a lot of plants, a lot of distribution centers all over the world. And, uh, came here full-time about five years ago, and we live at Twisted Oak Lane up the street here. Uh, I married a, a lady that was born and raised in Holden Beach, so she feels like she's home. She lived in Mount Airy with me for forty-seven years, so I owe her that, to be here. As far as, uh, interests, uh, play golf a lot, uh, but I've always been interested in, uh, being active in the community that I live in. Back in Mount Airy, I was, uh, did public service for thirty-seven years. I was on eight different boards, different times. I just believe that, uh, if you're gonna live in a community, you ought to be active in it. And so, uh, I used to be on the Sunset, Sunset, met Lisa and, uh, before the city took it over. Uh, I'm currently on the Turtle Patrol, have been for three years. I'm on the Board of the Old Bridge Historical Society for several years now. Uh, I'm on the Veterans Committee, uh, with Ron and Charlie and Mike Hargrave and that group. So, and now I'm on the planning board. So, I just believe that if you're gonna live in a community, you ought to figure out a way to be active and give back, and so that's why I'm here.
Good. Excellent. Thanks. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You look, sound like a person we can give a lot of homework to without a problem. And he's been armed with all his books and documents and everything, ready to go. Okay, the first item on the agenda is conflict of interest statement. Does any member have a conflict of interest or the appearance of a conflict of interest with regard to any item on the agenda? And if so, please state so at this time. We'll start this way, Stuart.
I do not.
Uh, I do not?
No, I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
Thank you. Uh, item three, to amend or approve the agenda. I guess, um, make sure, not sure, uh, not sure this is appropriate, but I have some items I want, I just add probably in, under section eight. There's a small table formatting error we need to talk about. Formatting error in one of the tables that I found. And then, what are we doing with the October sixteenth meeting? If we're deciding today? And scheduling sort of forward, because I already know I'm not here on eleven twenty either, so. So I guess maybe just a meeting schedule, fuck. So, just, uh, I'll move to, um, amended agenda includes some items under Administrative Common Eight, which is a formatting error I found in one of the tables, and then maybe scheduling, of the next series of planning board meetings. Anyone want to second that or anything additional?
Second it.
All in favor? Okay, the first item of business is approving our minutes of the August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five meeting, which I believe was our last meeting, right? Yes. So, anybody have any issues with that, Stuart? I think you said you might.
Yeah, I've got a few things I wanted to mention. In the, I guess on page two, in the comments from K. Ray, the sanctuary is not capitalized, and that last sentence just, it makes it feel more like the subdivision instead of a, like a sanctuary area.
Where are you at?
Ray K., item five on page two.
Oh, I see it.
Okay, second to the last sentence.
Yeah.
And then on the comments for the-
Should we change that to Sanctuary Community?
How are they officially known? Are they like The Sanctuary? I don't know what their official name is.
Well, everywhere else it's just called The Sanctuary.
Yeah, I see. The point is that because the word sanctuary has a generic meaning, and this is, this is, so maybe we should go The Sanctuary or Sanctuary, what, I'm happy with it, or Sanctuary Community. They're designated as the neighborhood. It's kind of small, but it designates the neighborhood. Right? So whatever's appropriate for that neighborhood, if it's The Sanctuary or the Sanctuary Community or something.
Should we point out that it's currently part of the ETJ?
Yeah, I don't think so. We normally don't on identifying where the people live, right?
Yeah, especially not in their comments.
All right.
Um, and then down on page four, um, the last sentence on the top paragraph of Manta Ray, it's Mano Ray, in the, in the minutes, I guess we should just fix that to Manta Ray.
It's page four, line five. The first word, it's just misspelled. Mano Ray, it should be Manta Ray.
Manta.
Kimberly.
Oh, wow.
Here, can you do it?
Sorry, be picky, but the-
Obviously, it must be a real word. A spell checker would have checked it.
Well, it showed up and, um, earlier as Manta Ray, so that was one reason I caught it. Um, and then, I guess, a bigger issue on the, where you summarized the planning board questions and concerns into bullet points. It, I don't feel like this represents the questions that we asked. This is a lot of how the developer answered, but I feel like we need to have our questions that we asked. Like, we asked about adding some plants to the buffer, and we asked about extending a sidewalk. And since we're the approving authority, I'd like it on the record that we asked, actually asked for these things. So I don't see our, our asks in here. You all see what I'm getting at?
Right.
Yeah.
The actual question, it's really more of the, so maybe we need to, this is gonna be hard to do, I guess.
For me-
Because we got, we got, it's, the, the section is headed, Planning Boards Question and Concerns, but it's really kind of the developer's answer, but maybe we need a couple of bullet points of planning boards, questions and concerns, and developers' responses. Break it into two sections, would that work? Thoughts, people? So we could say, planning boards, questions and concerns. Some of the same bullet, bullet points, landscaping, you know, I think I did. One asked for extending the buffer bushes all the way to the sidewalk. If I remember the item, it was like, I asked for it to go from the one sidewalk to the other sidewalk, because there's a gap in the shrubbery.
Mr. Chairman, why don't you table these and let Kimberly go back and pick up the questions?
Yeah, I think that's-
No, but let's just agree on maybe, do we agree on the format? That the bullet points might be fine, but you need a first set of bullet points that, here's the questions. Well, you can do question and answer, or-
Right.
Here were the planning board's questions, and then here were the developers' responses. You can, they're doing, you can do them together, you know, landscaping, you know, question and answer, or you can do all the questions and then all the, I'm not sure what would be easier or better.
Some of them were not so much questions as stating our concerns. For instance, Ron was kind enough to credit my origination of the term sidewalks to nowhere, which we, we did express in the communication to the developer. Now, their response is, you know, appropriately designated here, but I, I agree with Ron. I think we need to have kind of, I'd almost say, you know, Q and A, Q and A, Q and A, Q and A, Q and A.
Yeah, so that would be the two ways to do it, is the question and the response, and then-
I, I think I prefer the Q and A.
All right, let's do it that way.
Okay.
And then we'll re-
And don't forget to get my credit for sidewalks. Even though I wasn't here.
Anything else, Stuart? And then we can relook at that at the next meeting then, or?
No, I didn't have anything else.
Yeah, I agree with my concerns on that one. Anybody else that anything? Oh, Mike, you weren't here before, so we don't expect that. Anybody else have anything? I think we're good. Okay, so we'll table this approval or review of this to the next meeting with a couple of typographical errors to fix, and then the major item is reformatting the planning board's concerns and developer responses concerning the major site plan for the, uh, what we kind of know as the hotel here. Correct? All agreed?
All agreed.
Do we need a motion or anything on that, or? So, I'll, I'll motion to table with these corrections to the next meeting. Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the, next on the agenda, any public comments concerning items on the agenda? Okay, hearing no public comments, we'll move on to the new business section. So, Ron, say it if it was concerning, mending section three forty-one signs in the Mud District. All yours, Ron.
All right, thank you. So we have an application before you today. It was submitted by Ms. Kelly Stewart on behalf of the Carolina Dreams Golf LLC, who owns the Village at Sunset Beach Shopping Center and the undeveloped parcels in the Village at Sunset Beach. I believe she also is representing the Board of the Village at Sunset Beach Property Owners Association as well. Um, so collaboratively, they have, they're requesting an amendment to the sign ordinance to basically create sign standards for the mixed-use district that are in, in lieu of the current sign regulations, which are just for non-residential signage. Um, and conversations that I've had with Kelly, it's just, and my opinion is, it's not real clear some of the things that she and they would like to do with their signage, current signage, replacing, modernizing, potentially including wayfinding signs, and how the current sign code addresses those. So, in our, in our conversations, we felt like it was best for them just to petition to have the code amended to set aside sign regulations that are strictly applied to the Mud District and nowhere else in town, that allows, provides them some flexibility. And in essence, what they want to do is to be able to replace signage that they currently have and modernize it, basically where they are and in similar size and height and so forth. They also want to potentially include what I'm gonna call wayfinding signage.
I'm sorry, what's it?
Wayfinding.
Got it, okay.
Um, sign that says residential area this way, commercial area this way, planetarium this way, kind of things. Now, say that, that when we're reviewing sign ordinances, uh, we need to keep a few things in mind, and Kelly and I've had this conversation, from a zoning perspective, land use perspective, we're looking, okay, where can signs be placed? How big can signs be? How tall can signs be? You know, and those kind of things. Well, we can't say, look at it as, we want a sign to read a certain way. So we have to be as content neutral as possible based on Supreme Court case law, so keep that in mind. So even the terminology of wayfinding sign could, could fly in that a little bit, but I'm comfortable with, with the intent of what our, with using that terminology here. So we, if we have to look at a sign to say, okay, we have to, have to be able to read the sign, know what kind of sign it is, then that's not really content neutral sign, right?
Right, but as long as the sign, as long as I'm-
This raises one concern for me, which was in part of it, which is in the slats, the replaceable slats, the term logo is used as being part of the signage.
And-
And historically, these signs in other communities do not include logos. And my concern is, in those that do, there are, they look more like billboards than signs. So that would be my concern. I don't know if that crosses the barrier.
That crosses the barrier. We cannot, if, again, let's keep in mind, our review, when we create a code for signage, and the court case I'm referring to is Reed versus Gilbert.
Basically, the size, shape, and location.
Size, how big a sign can be? How tall can it be? Where can it be? How many signs do we want? Types of sign, so when I say type, monument, pole.
No, no, I understand.
Are they internally lit or externally lit, digital or not digital? But if we cannot say that a sign cannot include logos, or we wanted the word, and one of the things Kelly and I talked about was, um, I think if you look in her application, or one of the signs had to have like inserts, I think it was.
Yeah.
And, and my conversation with Kelly, I said, Kelly, I just don't feel comfortable adding that, because we don't want to, we, we want, we don't want to put that in the town's code. If you want that as part of your bylaws, that's fine, but how a sign is gonna be constructed, but that's, that's kind of stepping over a little bit more than what, so that's why you didn't see that included in the proposed draft language that I've written.
So what you're saying is, it would be under the aegis of the developer or the owner to suggest or enforce that on signage of this type, logos could not be included.
Right, but the town cannot really-
But we can't do it.
Town, my, my suggestion, recommendation to you is that a town cannot say a sign can or should not include the logo.
Sure.
So, Kelly had submitted an application, uh, you'll see her letter, an application beginning on page twelve of your staff report. And her language begins on page fourteen. The top where it says master sign plan, and then there's A, B, C, D, et cetera. And then in red text, you see her, that's her inventory that she's done, and that should be, that should have been included in your packet as well. Thirteen or fourteen signs that she has identified, and where they fit into each one of these types of signs. So then I took her amendment request, um, put a couple of things together, met with Kelly, and then she and I've had two or three phone conversations and, and emails of back and forth to what we've landed on in your case summary. So I'm not trying to complicate, trying to complicate this, but I want to kind of talk about how we got to the iteration we're ordering.
Right, yeah, that's pretty-
If that makes sense.
Okay.
So.
So.
So I've looked, I don't know if you want to talk specifics, Mr. Chairman?
I guess, I think everybody understands how we got, especially Mike knew. So Kelly's being the representative of the management team there, right? Submitted a request for a text amendment. Staff has taken their input, their requests, their application, created amended texts, and now we're at this point to review it, to either approve it, deny it, or table it, whatever.
Right.
Or next step.
And the applicant's aware of that, of all those possibilities.
So, Mike, I'll leave you to last, to get the feel of how we do this.
Do you want me to go through each type of sign, Mr. Chairman?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
We might, but what, my, well, I'd like to first maybe go through everybody, just some general questions.
Or do we wanna?
Well, Mike and I had somewhat of a preliminary conversation about this issue of the monument signs that front on nine oh four and one seventy-nine. We included in UDOs that affected the sanctuary signage a somewhat shorter limit on height that I do not see in, I believe it's number nine, section B. And my concern is, we're creating a motif along one seventy-nine oh, nine oh four. Now, I realize that includes planned community signs and mud district signs, but it seems to me it is important that in terms, and this also affects the gateway issues that we're gonna address later. I, I think it would be somewhat untoward. I mean, we can't go back and ask Sea Trail to reduce the size of its sign because they're grandfathered in, but we have asked new planned communities to reduce the height and scale of their signs. And what I, what I want to avoid is, okay, a res, a, a planned community sign is based on one set of, uh, height restrictions and size, but a commercial signs along one seventy-nine oh four, the same as the sanctuary sign, has a different set of standard, because I think that's gonna create a somewhat untoward, sense of signage as you approach the commercial entities that are trying to-
Right, but Richard, I believe sanctuary is under residential.
Yeah, I was gonna clarify that.
Which is slightly different standard.
Right.
But I agree with you to a certain extent, which is kind of where I was going, is, uh, consistency with all other commercial areas around them. I realize that the mud is separate, but I was trying to make sure that we don't, create a standard in the mud that's wildly di, or different from, let's just say, the place across the street, whether it's Pelican Square or someplace, right?
Sure.
And I noticed, I think I noticed some things where we're seeming to be different for, uh, reasons, because some of it exists maybe. So I'm kind of both, we may have to go back and fix the other non, we might have to do something to the other non-resident. I don't think it's fair, completely fair, to the other commercial developments in the area, or future commercial developments in the gateway area, that the mud had some standards, and the other areas don't have the same, uh, let's just call it flexibility maybe, or of what they can do. So I was trying to, when I went through to say, okay, what does everyone across the street with them can do? So we may have to do some, if we think it's fine for the mud, which may be true, then maybe we also have to look on the other side, and either, we probably can't do it today, but say, we may have to do similar things. Like, the first thing in my mind is the primary monument side, you know, the four-sided and the amount of area it's not in, that, that type of sign is not in the other commercial district, other non-residential. There's no, doesn't speak of multi-sided monuments, doesn't-
And most sign codes don't. Most communities would not allow the type of sign out front, but I think in this case, their, their intent is to, yeah, the ability to keep it replaced and modernized.
I understand that, but, but now other folks may say, well, that's a really nice multi-sided sign.
Why can't I have it?
Why can't I have it?
They're not in zone mud, for one, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, they're not in zone mud, but-
And once you're in the mud district, I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah.
Okay, it's the consistency along the seventy-nine and nine oh four corridor that concerns me. And believe me, I'm, I'm the biggest promoter of the mud district probably on the board. I mean, I would much prefer to see a vibrant village mud-style community than string development up one seventy-nine. Excuse me, Kelly. But, so, I, I don't want to place an arbitrary restriction in this, but it does seem to me that, I think it actually would be better for the mud district to appear as if they are consistent with the commercial entities that surround them. When you drive through Market Commons or Mayfair, you don't see a huge discrepancy between the signs for those mixed-use developments and the areas that surround them. Now, you know, they have the benefit of being built organically from day one and not, you know, we're trying to do this as kind of a paste-on, which creates some significant challenges, I recognize. But I think that ought to be the goal. I'm not sure how we execute that in language here, but that's what I'm curious to find out.
One thing, if I could comment on this, the, on your comment about the sanctuary. Um, and the chair pointed, hit the, hit the nail on the head on one point, is sanctuary is unresidential and the sanctu, and the residential subdivision signs are limited to sixty-four square feet, which is consistent, but only eight foot in height, which is, commercial areas can have sixteen feet.
Right.
The other thing I want to hit on that, to add to that though, is they're already allowed to have sixteen feet in height, sixty-four square feet for their signage.
Correct.
And if this board chooses to do, or the council even chooses to do something different than that, then we're potentially looking at a down zoning that flies against the down zoning definition that the state has yet to change.
Well, I don't think that's where, that's where, not where my mind is.
No, I know, I know, that's not what your intent is, but I want to make sure-
My, my intention is, if we allow something in the mud to be, whether it's fourteen or sixteen, I have no problem making that.
I get that.
Allow them to have a sixteen-foot sign, but if we allow them to have multi-sided signs, and we pick an area, whether it's the area they've given us, or in my mind, a slightly different area, then my thought is, that should be also extended to three forty-one H. B, that we may have to add the same thing there. I don't think we should-
In that case, we're up zoning, not down zoning.
Right, and, and just, just understand, a lot of, a lot of communities, I was involved with Mayfair in Wilmington, Mr. Dyson, you mentioned it. Mayfair had its own sign regulations for a long time. Now, there were references to the Central Business District as an example, but Mayfair, when the city decided to create the mixed-use, just, I was saying, the city, City of Wilmington, decided to create, create that mixed-use district, they knew that the mixed-use district carries different characteristics, if you will, than, than your typical development. And they wanted to make sure that it was prosperous and thriving, and so they allowed different types of signage in the mixed-use code than they did in other, other parts of the community.
And, and, and it's an interesting comparison. Now, Mayfair is a much, much larger area, so they've got a lot more room in which they can experiment. But when you drive into Mayfair and you drive through the residential area to get to it, that signage is fairly modest and moderate. Okay, there's not a huge sign in front of that when you make that turn that says, okay, here's Mayfair, come on in, all right? We're somewhat limited because our mud district is, is a much smaller and much closer to the major thoroughfares.
You're about five towns smaller.
Yeah, so, you know, I think it creates, and again, once you're in the mud district, I mean, if Hilton wants to put a big sign up, more power to him. But how we, how we manage that from its inception rather than after the fact, I mean, I don't have a particular investment in one approach or another, but I think we need to define the approach clearly, and whether it's, okay, we approve these signs at sixteen feet and then chain, upzone so others can do the same, or if we say-
Or just, or just incorporate it in the, in three forty-one, like, non-residential sign standard as it is, and they'll make a difference where it is. I mean, we were writing like a whole section here for the mud district.
A lot of it, though, is the number of signs, because-
Well, that's maybe all we have to put.
Yeah, but I don't want every business on one seventy-nine or nine oh four to get two monument signs at every entrance.
Yeah.
I mean, but I feel like the mud district warrants that, but I don't feel like, uh, you know, a tanning salon, standalone tanning salon should have two monument signs at their entrance. I mean, that's-
I'm just, you're, you're, what I was gonna say is consistent with what you're saying, being, be aware of any unintended consequences. If we just open it up to allow everything that, that the mud district owners are requesting to plot to the mud, and you end up putting that for everyone, be aware of the unintended consequences.
Yeah, that, that approach makes, I mean, I understand where Ron's going with this. That makes me a little nervous, because now you could have, you know, Joey's Pizza put up two monument signs on nine oh four.
And, and another thing I would say is, if, you know, this community is constantly reviewing its- And another thing I would say is if this community is constantly reviewing its codes and asking and processing amendments, I think I've processed 15 amendments in my 15 months here now. I'm guessing, I don't know the exact number, but it's been, it feels like every month we've had a text amendment in front of you guys.
I think it's close.
So.
It was no different before in the old.
Well, I have looked at the case, numbers of cases in the 2025 versus 23, 24, and we've had more cases in 25 thus far than we had in 24, 23, based on, just on the folders listed in the.
Well, don't forget, we finished the rewrite in 2023, so a lot of the unintended consequences of that document have only come to light.
I agree.
As we've walked down the path, and you've been great in pointing those out. So I'm not uncomfortable with the number being more now than it was in 2024.
Me either, what I was going to say is.
In fact, I'm encouraged by that.
What I was going to say, though, is we're soon will be kicking off a land use plan update whenever we get through the RP process and that gets started. So you can rewrite your, you can rewrite your plan. And then following that, my guess is there's also now, then there's going to be an analysis of what do we need to do with our codes to make our codes consistent with that.
But like, it's like, I give them on the monument side, but we write a whole new section on wall signs. We have a quite lengthy section on wall signs already, which we reviewed once. Why are we writing a new one when we can just update the existing one? It seems like the only thing we're concerned about is that the wall sign can be played up to the roof line or parapet, or my mind just a little bit below the top of it, and just do it that way.
Now, is this to address the Hampton Inn Suites signage?
Yeah, well, because it, we have somewhere where it says it can only.
The current code in non-residential allows, if you have multi-story building, the sign, the wall sign can be no taller, no higher than the second floor.
Right. Which is on five.
That's townwide.
Eight, two.
Yeah. And are we trying to change that?
This proposal would allow the sign, if approved, would allow the sign for a multi-story building to be basically at the, on the parapet.
Okay.
Per this amendment.
Now, my concern is in terms of how that impacts in the mud district is if there's a signage four stories up on the back of Hampton Inn Suites, is that going to conflict with the residential ambience of the townhomes on market?
I think it's a conversation we can have through.
I'm sorry.
I think that's a conversation we can have when we analyze that particular section.
Okay.
How many, where, where's up here, how many signs, do we want one on all four facades?
Yeah.
Do we want them?
I'm not uncomfortable with being up there, I just don't want it to be lighted. That's the issue for me, but go ahead, we'll jump off that bridge when we get to it.
Mr. Chairman, I think with pulling the mud district out into its own section makes it a lot easier for staff when we are looking at the mud district and not having to.
Flip back and forth.
Yeah, flip back and forth of the non-residential code as compared to the mud code. It just makes it a lot easier on staff if it's separated and we know right where to go for one section.
I would agree, but I think we'll be back here writing text amendment on 341.
Not for the mud.
No, when somebody else, something wants the same.
But that's, that's.
And you can do that, but right now, what you have before you is an application from the mud district management to separate their district into its own code. Next month, if you want to take up the rest of non-residential, we could definitely do that. But right now, you need to be looking at this as the applicant has requested.
Good, but I think we should just keep an eye on the other part of the code.
Keep an eye on the other part of the.
That we know what we're doing is that, is try to be, try not to be too inconsistent with it, like the square footages and the heights and the, where we can easily be consistent with the 341 non-residential is, and not affect the intent, is try to stay there, like the wall sign, the lighting, like one of my points is lighting. We have extensive in our other code, what the lighting should be, how it should not shine, and like, in this part, we just wrote one sentence on lighting, that it could be internal or external, and somebody else has got to decide later if it's good, and I just don't, I think that is too incon, and be sick, so internal, external illumination permitted, subject to approved lighting plan, yet if you look at our 341, in a number of places, we're much more specific on.
This is in the mud district.
In the rest of the world. So, as long as I think we keep an eye on consistency.
Well, and the mud district is going to be different because the mud district is huge, it's lots of acreage, there's no other commercial areas. MB1 is one lot down the thoroughfare. 904 is one lot down the whole thoroughfare. So the mud district is a huge plot of land that will have a lot of different things going on internally, that isn't going to be the same on any other piece that's inside town limits or in the ETJ. And even BB1 on the island is a block off of Sunset Boulevard either side. So you're still only dealing with one lot.
So Lisa, help me understand, are you suggesting that by pulling all of those regs out of the other section and putting them in the mud district, this is simplifying the process?
For the town staff.
For the town staff.
It does, it's, how does it simplify? When Kelly comes in and says, we want to change a sign, or one of her business owners, we're able to look at the mud.
You don't have to flip back to another section.
We're able to pull the mud and say, here's the signage requirements for the mud.
So if we have, if we feel there are sections that when we pull it forward need to be altered because of the nature of the mud district, that's really on us.
I mean, it's a bigger project and you can look at it more consistent with how, consistent with what is the town's vision. I mean, when the town, when this code was created, the town, somebody on town, it was through the comp plan or through whoever sitting on council decided, they didn't want multi-story buildings in town basically to have a sign above the second floor.
Right.
That was a vision from the town.
Right.
At whenever that code was written. Everything's been there a long time. Mud is a different entity, and even, you know, some of the policies I pulled talks about how the mud is an economic development hub.
Yeah. And there are other inconsistencies we can talk about later. I mean, I understand Ron's concerns, but I am more persuaded, I want to make this as easy as possible. It's really important, you know, let's face it, the mainland is a mess, a mess. You know, we have a unconstructed steel frame that's been there for years. It's one of the first things that people see when they drive into our community. We have a sign that says Village Center, and when you look down that sign, it's a grass field. And so if this makes it easier to encourage the appropriate scaled commercial development in the mud district, I'm more persuaded that that's a path we ought to take. Ron?
Which one?
Okay.
Okay. Well, I thought you might have.
Which one?
Okay.
And I will point out, there's a lot, there's a lot of monument signs that are allowed by this proposal. One is the four-sided we've talked about, then we're talking about the entrance signs.
Right.
The, there's a monument sign that's a traffic circle there near Food Lion, and that's covered in this.
In the Bank of America sign.
Then you have those, next one was individual properties such as the Bank of America or the hotel or other businesses that may come in that would have to build a place in a monument sign.
These are tasteful logos that promote, you know, hey, Bank of America, that's a great brand, we welcome them into their community, we want to have their logo prominently displayed appropriately, same way with the hotel, same way with Food Lion. So, you know, it's important to get, you know, what I want to make sure we avoid is we have a bunch of monument signs to nowhere, you know? So, you know, that's, that's what I want to make sure we avoid.
Okay, so you want to just go section by section by?
Sure, I can try to summarize.
By sign type, I guess?
Yeah, I can try to summarize it. So, first one we've hit on a little bit is the primary monument sign.
What, I'm sorry, what page are we on?
Page seven, down at the bottom. Talked about this briefly already, but the primary monument sign, that's the four-sided sign there.
Number 14.
Number four, yes. So, proposal there, but one of those not to exceed 14 feet in height with a maximum area of 140 feet, square feet. They put square in there, sorry.
Oh, yeah, you missed.
Thirty-five on each.
You missed the square in a lot of places. You don't have to review that. Either spell out square feet or I don't know if you can superscript the two on there or not.
Yeah, I'll just put square. Spell it out, 35 roughly, and that comes out equivalent of 35 each side. So that's the first monument sign.
These areas match the existing sign.
Basically, yes. Her inventory.
It's a little bit bigger.
How much a little bit bigger?
Yeah, let's see.
It's about five square feet per side, bigger.
We tried to round up as much as we could.
Okay, so the sign that we're referring to is the sign that we see pictured in the upper right-hand corner.
Right, so it's, the current sign based on applicant's measurements is about 10 and a 10.4 feet in height and 90 inch, about 48 inch, which is.
So they're asking for an additional two and three and a half feet?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm reading?
Yeah, something like that. So we're just kind of rounding it up.
In the existing sign heights, sanctuary's eight, I don't even know what Sea Trails is.
I'm not sure.
But it's higher.
Currently, non-residential zone districts can have up to 16 feet in height for a monument sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, indeed.
So, and then number two says basically, subscript two, so it has to have some landscaping around the base.
Which is right out of our current code.
Yes. All right, then letter B is the, what I'm going to call the primary, excuse me, the entrance signage, so two monument signs per public street frontage.
So on every, so when they, when you turn into.
Yep.
When you turn into, now I'm thinking of Sunset Boulevard. There's a, there's a turn into Food Lion, there's a turn into Fibbers, there's a turn into the, I forget the name of the community, but the multi, and then that's it. So there's three turn-ins along 179, am I wrong? I should know, I drive it every day.
We use the maps, use the map behind you and the board over there, I'm going to come up with a point, sorry.
I see, okay.
We have this one, what Kelly just pointed out, ability to put one here.
So the, whoa, whoa, the turn-in.
It's behind the.
Isn't that a turn-in just below four?
Yes, one here, one here, I skipped that one, sorry. One here.
Four, yeah, five, six, seven, eight.
This one's future, but if the code is amended, it would allow that one.
Right.
So you, as far as on the map here, these are the existing signage and based on the inventory.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So this amendment could potentially, or would potentially allow them to put two monument signs here, three monument signs here, assuming that's theirs. And then as this develops down here, their ability to place something down here.
And each.
In addition to what's already out.
Each of those signs would be allowed to be 14 point whatever feet.
No, each one of those, where I'm looking at B, looking into this one, maximum 64 square feet, 16 feet in height, which is what the current code would allow for a monument sign.
Okay, and currently, the monument signs that are there are what's numbered?
Yes, sir. And she has an inventory in your applicant, as part of her application, which one of those signs are. If you want to flip them, it's fine.
Right.
All right, so this is signage in her inventory, 14, that's the four-sided sign. And then one and two, it's your Food Lion sign and the Village sign.
So each one of these would now be permitted to have a 14-foot four-sided sign?
No, no, this, only this sign here.
One, I think.
Okay, all right, got it.
One of those.
You get one.
And then at each entrance, they could have up to two monument signs.
Okay.
Up with 16 feet in height and 64 square feet in area.
But not a, not a four.
Not the four-sided, not the four-sided.
All right, okay. I think I understand now.
Three A, B, and C is what our code will currently call a directional sign on the Bank of Americas.
Do we have a definition for?
Of a directional sign?
Directional sign or wayfinding sign?
Wayfinding sign, I think I tried to include the somewhat of intent of what a temporary, what a tenant directory and wayfinding signage are intended to guide vehicle and pedestrian traffic. Keep in mind, though, that based on what I said earlier about content neutral, how do you know if something's like, how do you know what type of sign it is? Do you got to read it? So if it's got an arrow and says entrance, exit, technically that's a directional sign, but you got to read it to know what kind of sign it is. We can't necessarily limit with the wording on that sign.
Right.
So, B on this proposal on page eight would be these signs here as an example. Outparse them. Those are the types, so when we said earlier, so the maps here, the sign is along 179 and 904, that's where the entrance monument signs could be. Not the primary, not the four-sided sign, but the other types of monument signs.
So, B2 is 64 square feet, B3 is 16 feet of height.
Right.
B4.
Yes.
Two additional.
Those, these signs there, that's like the sign that she has currently in the sign five at the traffic circle.
Circle.
Yes, sir. So, in conversation with Ms. Stewart, the thought was, they definitely would like to replace this one with something, but also have potential, vision might have another one somewhere else on site.
Also 16-foot high?
Up to.
And how tall is this?
There's no height on four, is that?
There's no height on four.
I would have included as part of three, but yes, we can include height.
And how, do we, what is the height of this sign?
Nine inches tall is what it is now, is that correct?
Nine feet tall?
Ninety inches, so that's what, eight feet?
Yeah.
Nine feet.
We're talking about an additional six feet.
Doesn't mean they have to put 16 feet, they're allowed, they would be allowed to.
Well, hopefully.
They probably wouldn't want one that high because that's supposed to be visible probably from an automobile.
True, right.
So I don't think you can look that high from that close in to read. I don't know, do we need to leave it at 16 feet or should we pick a 12-foot number or something? How do you get to 64 square feet? That's, well, eight by eight. Seems like 16 there is quite.
It'd be 16 by four.
Yeah, so, and that currently, you said it's currently nine feet high?
Hey, weird, look.
It's, well, 90 inches, well, seven and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the hope is that as we add more businesses to the mud districts, you're going to have to make that sign bigger.
So maybe something like twelve foot back, some of those two additional ones, because then you're looking, if you're in a car, you're kind of, you're, you get the upper ones, you probably wouldn't see them anyway.
Right, if they believe the applicant is shaking her head.
Shaking her head.
Be okay with that?
Nodding, not shaking.
I mean, I, I.
Nodding.
I know.
Nodding, excuse me.
In some areas, the signage would really only include those businesses that are proximate to the sign. So as you drive further in, you would see a sign that included businesses that are in the next section. And that kind of gets you out of the issue of, I, at this sign, I got to get every business that's in the mud district on this sign, which is actually more confusing. I want to know, if I'm driving, I want to know, okay, in the next block, what businesses are included? Okay, now, hopefully, we're going to fill the next two blocks with more businesses, doctors' offices, restaurants, whatever, at that location. Can we go back to the intersection sign?
You went to that, the little one.
Yeah, the first one.
So, no.
The map.
The map.
Oh, the map, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this. So as you drive back, so at that next intersection, the one after the roundabout, you would have another sign that says, okay. Now, there's a hotel, a restaurant, a doc, whoever these businesses are.
They would have the ability to place it, yes.
They had to be, so in essence, we could. Increase the number of signs allowed, but reduce the overall square footage of each individual sign. With the idea that. We don't have to tell everybody.
Yes.
What every business is in the mud district.
Are you saying increase, are you saying Richard, increase? Because they get the two at the entrances. You're saying the two additional is insufficient?
I think two additional is.
Even though they haven't asked for more, two, but.
Yeah.
Because their major intersections are only two, right?
Yeah. So I mean, I could.
Over by the circle and the other major one.
I could see a sign at five, I could see a sign at, um, that next, um.
Yeah, where the.
I mean, this picture is pre-sanctuary.
No, they're up there.
Up there, above it. Up there.
Okay, where's Manor Ray Road?
It's not, it's not shown.
All right, but, um.
Yeah, it's over by the five point.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it. I mean, in a perfect world, there'd be a sign there and there'd be a sign, um. At that next intersection, where the hotel's going to be.
Well.
I'm just, I'm just spitballing this right now, but.
Yeah, those would be part of the wayfinding.
Those are wayfinding signs, not monuments.
Well, they, they're kind of both. I mean, they're kind of saying, in this next block, these are the following businesses that you're going to see. I mean, that's the way they do it in Mayfair. So you don't, I mean, when you run into Mayfair, you don't see the sign for every business that's in that. You see the signs for the businesses that are in that first block. Then you go to the next block, you see the signs that are in that block.
If you look at our wafer and D, they, they can do a sign up to thirty-two square feet.
Right. Okay.
So that's allowed in D I, right? D one, rather?
Okay.
Correct.
So I think we're okay.
All right, sounds, sounds right.
Or if they choose.
Because it's smaller, we're allowing them six feet there and thirty-two square feet. And this other bigger ones, we're allowing two that are, well, actually twice as big now, twelve foot high and sixty-four square feet.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that does the job.
I think that covers it, okay. Kelly, are you?
You can just.
I don't want to make your life more difficult, but.
Twelve feet in height, sixty-four square foot in area.
So my objection is on this lighting thing. I mean, we went from a lot of language on lighting to, to me, this seems awful vague. I don't know, you guys that do some signs more. All right, we don't talk about the lumens level. We're now doing it internal and external. Which I believe our previous one just said external lighting, so I'm assuming this is some sort of backlit sign? So we don't, we don't specify lumen levels, brightness, and it just seems weak, I guess, in my mind.
No, unless I, unless you know something in the code that I don't, I don't see any, when I'm looking at this, the non-residential commercial, the non-residential signage for monument signs, I don't see any lighting standards in the current code.
I, I didn't see them either.
Now, you do have for the residential.
Residential does.
But not in the non-residential.
So this is mixed juice, right?
Correct.
So we got residential and businesses mixed together here.
But it's making clear that internal.
Though to me, that some of the same ideas need to be put. I'm saying that paragraph is, that line six is insufficient. And I don't even know what it means, subject to approved lighting plan. Who approves it? Who does it?
Well, we do have. Well, Bronson Lunt, we're totally prepared, but we have.
I am sure their intent is to not to do a Las Vegas strip sign, but I don't think we have anything here. I mean, if you look at the residential one in.
Prohibited signs includes digital signs.
Yeah.
So they could not do a digital.
If you look under our resident, G D three. It has permitted monument signs may illuminated by external or silhouette lighting only. External lighting fixtures shall not cast light or glare in any direction other than the elements on, of the sign. Such sightings shall be placed such that provide even illumination, et cetera, et cetera. I just think some of that needs to be incorporated over here. Because you are mixed juice, so. Well, again, tell me, what does that mean? When you say internal, external illumination permitted, subject to approved lighting plan, what does that mean?
I would look at a lighting plan for the lighting standards in the code, to make sure that it's not emitting lighting outside of those parameters, to whatever the foot candles are for general on the streets, onto adjacent properties, et cetera.
So they could put any light backlit on their sign?
Currently, current, they can currently, under the non-res, in the non-residential for monument signs, how, how, that's how I read the code. I don't see lighting standards.
Yeah.
For non-residential, there's nothing that says internal, external cat light only cast onto.
Yeah, we only do on the canopy signs.
We do for canopies.
Yeah. Well, that doesn't mean it's right. I, I'm just concerned about, I mean, out of control bright signs here back.
Right.
Even though I don't, I'm sure their intent would not be to do that, but, because you are going to have some things facing. Residential areas, because it's a mix, so you can have some residential areas facing, visible to signs, how, how bright should we allow? And we don't, like I said, we don't put lumens in here, we don't, I don't, I just, to me, it was a little.
So is your concern about in the residential portion?
Well, some of them could be facing.
So where the townhomes are?
So like eleven, I don't know if that, that going to be a lit sign or not. The hotel's going to have a backlit sign, I assume, or some sort of lit sign, right? So. Excuse me? Oh, sorry. Yeah, that's their, that's that little, their pedestal or monument, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And there is one one for parcel. So every parcel, the thing that's allowed, that always.
Right. I mean, I agree, there's got to be some lights. I'm not saying there's not, we'd borrow any kind of lights, but, uh. Now, that sign's probably not lit at all, though, it'll look like, right?
Doesn't look like it.
I don't see anything on the ground. We can go back to some of the other ones, probably have lights on top, right? That one has a light at the bottom, right, shining up on it?
Yeah.
And there's, there by the little green roof that has, looks like two little light fixtures on about, but again. So if they replace it, they could put, the way I read this, they could put any kind of light on they want, and I don't know if that's appropriate.
Neon strips, they could not do digital signage, but yes.
But they can do, let's just call them floodlights, I don't think that's the right.
They could cast the light.
Cast, light casting, or they could do some, a backlit sign now, right? With a panel in front, and, and I think we're a little weak here on saying, well, the light levels or something.
Yeah, man, they can just, I, I, I don't disagree with you, just understand.
I'm just saying, if they put out a plan that happens to have a lot of light, I don't think we could do anything. If we, if we do an analysis, like, boy, that's really, that's four hundred candle power, or four hundred, thousand lumens more than we really like, I don't think we can say you can't do it, based on that paragraph.
Where you could not approve the lighting.
Correct. That's why.
Yeah, but, yeah, I mean, we would prefer to do this by ordinance than by, you know.
Meaning, and I don't know what the, any kind of appropriate languages or numbers would be. Obviously, they should be able to light their signs. I'm not saying they can't light their signs from either a backlit style. Or a casting light style, but I just think we need something to say. Some sort of, I don't know if somebody, anybody have any experience with like those little amount of lum, amount of lumens per square foot, or something is considered normal? I have no idea. I've never built a sign in my life, in a wall sign.
Outside of my, I mean, I understand the issue, because the other issuer.
I mean, is it, you know, is like a ten thousand, is a thousand lumens per square foot, well, that's a magical.
We have illumination levels outlined in the lighting standards. So architectural lighting, canopy lighting, multifamily parking lot lighting, um, so there's minimums and maximums allowed in there.
So is it, so can we not just pull that forward and stick it in the mud district definitions?
So we could refer to the table, um, but like, and then the maximum illumination levels, foot candles, measured at the street as an example, was limited to five. Property line of non-residential use is abutting residential or residential district, point five.
So, yeah, yeah, but there's no property line in here. There's, no, not between a non-residential and a, there is on it, it's one.
But those, those parcels, there are parcels out there, there's parcels.
Yeah, so.
There are just parcels out there, yeah.
So it would be the point, so, yeah.
So if we.
So do we maybe just, so you're saying we could just say in that.
That's, uh, section three.
Is referred to that table?
We can refer to table three, it's in three point three eight, it's table three point fourteen.
So can we put that in the clause of, the mud district can simply say, lighting standards will adhere to.
Right.
Whatever.
Those tables.
Subject to lighting maximum illumination levels, table, outline of table three point one four.
Yeah, whatever, I'll show you the right table.
Because this, to some extent, we have a unique problem in the mud district. Wherever we have commercial and residential butting up against each other in unique zoning classifications, we have some fairly stringent considerations. We discovered, to my mind, to our horror, that when we put a hotel right next to the townhomes, we had no buffering regs that we can enforce. All right, now, to their credit, the developer proposed putting eighteen feet ahead of yous, but I think we're going to run into this problem more often, where we're creating intersections of commercial and residential.
It's sort of in the name, it's in the M.
Big part of it.
It's in the M, it's mixed.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we don't have the hard delineation between a non-residential and residential, because they're mixed together. It's sort of the point, I guess. It's part of the point, but you know.
Develop.
Right.
You buy in there.
So I guess, I would say, if the table seems to stop, that the pass, it sort of limits a possible irritant to a residential, uh, person, then I'm good with that. All my concern is, is that there's sort of an upper limit, that it would not become an high irritant to a resident, because. I know you're saying it's okay.
No, 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 I was going to say, I mean, I'm forcing these type of things in Wilmington, North Carolina, where folks who move downtown Wilmington, after they, new building is built, they will move into a mixed-use building and then complain about the restaurant below them.
Yeah.
Or the lighting that's submitted from, you know, where they're in the middle, they are in a mixed-use.
We have a somewhat different challenge here, in, in that we are imposing a mud district after residential assets. And that's, I mean, the people from High Market who came in here with their hair on fire because of the hotel, I get it, you know, I mean, the hotel wasn't here and then they bought their townhome.
That's why I like the code to be sort of specific enough to where you could say. If they, somebody says, boy, that sign is bright, it's shining right into my bedroom, you can look in and go, no, it's point five candle power at your, they meet the code.
Why don't we do this?
And you chose to live in an area where that kind of.
Not like, well, it was part of an approved, the word, the vagrity is kind of gone.
Yeah.
You know, at your property line, it's whatever number I said, I think you said point five candle power, which is X lumens. I forget the conversion at the, in my mind right now, but there's a conversion.
Are we having fun yet?
Would you can stand there with your phone with the light meter and you can actually measure it right there and say, it conforms.
It's five at the street, it's point five if your property's adjacent to.
Right.
So.
So that's, as long as it, it's tied that way, I'm good. So you can go out there with a light meter and say, it conforms. Or if it doesn't conform, well, sorry, we missed it, it doesn't conform, they need to fix it, right?
Yeah, and then, and this is an area where I have much more expertise as an audio engineer. We constantly had to do decibel ratings to adjoining properties. So I think if you build that into the code, hey, if it's seventy dB at the property line, you chose to live here, it's seventy dB, get over it. I think you can do the same. This sounds to me like the same.
So for that sub-paragraph five, we're just going to add a reference.
Yeah, and so what.
To the appropriate table.
So what I turned it was, internally, external illumination is permitted, subject to, and then a strict, I'm striking approved lighting plan. He's saying, subject to the maximum illumination levels outlined in table three point fourteen.
Table what, three point fourteen?
Three point fourteen.
I think that nails it. Thanks, Ron. Ron, are you comfortable with that?
Peachy.
I live for these moments.
All right, so.
The landscaping is just copied from the.
Copy from other codes, yes. Um, and you notice that was, that was something Kelly and I talked about after in the process. I don't think, I don't think she intended to leave it out, but she wasn't thinking about including it, so, um, she was comfortable with keeping that in there. C is the monument signage per individual parcel, so think the, um. Bank of America. The Bank of America, the sign here.
Is this equivalent to their existing sign essentially, right?
Should be, so.
Eight foot high only, forty-eight square feet.
So currently, I mean, they really could have sixty-four square feet. Per the current code, the non-residential, so they're limited, based on her inventory, forty-eight square feet. She was comfortable with going to forty-eight square feet for the smaller, because, you know, there could be smaller lots internally, most, most of the time. Um, and then the landscaping requirement.
Is there any, I mean, given this content issue, I mean, one of the things that makes a market square in a wayfair work is, is kind of a thematic consistency to signage. So no matter where you are, you know you're in. I guess the only way is that we can encourage that by the developer.
I'm sure, I'm sure if they remodeled their sign, they're going to use a certain style, right, you're going to pick a style sign.
Yeah, I, I would not, I would advise against regulating, like a common signage plan, certain colors and.
All right.
That's just, I've, I've administered a code like that way before the reverse.
Just like C-trail did when they redid their signs, they kind, they picked the style and did them all the same, right?
Is this part of her application?
Yes, yes, that was her inventory, based on the map.
And I think that kind of lifts the ambience of. The neighborhood. I mean, it certainly makes C-trail look a lot better, because those signs were falling apart, but.
So in C.
See what?
We were just talking about monument signs for street frontage. So that street frontage, is that a private street? Is that a public street? These would be internal, right?
Right, we, we, it's, that's the reason why it does say public or private, it's just a street, so by definition, it could be public or private.
Inside the district only, right?
Inside the district.
Do we need to specify that?
Well, but some of the, I mean.
Are they outside? Well, they're out, you're at the perimeter, perimeter of the.
You have perimeter. It's a perimeter, right?
They're inside the district.
But they're inside the district, yes, but all these signs would be inside the district. But you may have something that's along nine oh four, one seventy-nine, that could have a monument sign.
Is there, but when we say, when we say inside the district, is there's, is, now that makes me a little nervous, because technically, any signage along one seventy-nine and nine oh four could be inside the district.
It is, when I say inside the district, it's zoned, the own property that is zoned, and you know, if I have a sign the right of way.
Okay.
That, when I said like in the one seventy-nine and with nine oh four right of way, that's not zoned, it's juice.
Got it.
Their signage will be on their property that are zoned mixed use.
Okay.
That's what I mean by that. Perimeter, internal, maybe internal is a better way, maybe. Um, but, but you have potential signage already that.
And these are relatively, and these are relatively low, they're only eight foot high, right? Yeah.
So, yeah, so like the Bank of America you'll see is sign four and it's along. Seaside there, right?
Right.
So that'd be a monument sign. A sign on the right hand side there.
Right. I guess my question is, if. If there's a monument sign at, um, at public street or a street entrance off of a major highway. And they have two monuments there and then they have a business right next to it, then they get another monument?
The business could have a monument, yes.
So we could have three in short, six, seven, okay.
There is a possibility, yes.
Okay.
What about, uh?
Can I ask my question?
I was gonna add to yours about, can you do something on separation of monuments?
Separation of this, like can't be closer than, or must be separated, yes, you could, that is an option. I don't know if there's any, I don't know how they would comply. I mean, I don't know what their separation is now is what I mean by when I say comply. I'm not sure if they're a hundred feet, fifty feet, two hundred feet.
I guess I'm not that worried because these are so small with, in comparison to the regular.
Well, I was thinking if that's an issue, that might be a way to.
I mean, just looking at the map.
Spread them out, so to speak.
I'm just looking at the map there, the Bank of America sign, which is sign four. Or right hand side. Is right now separated from signs one and sign fourteen. Doesn't mean they couldn't have one on the food line entrance. Up just south of, of sign four.
Right.
But sign, but the Bank of America is its own piece of property, is my understanding.
So, back to this, these monument signs for individual parcel.
Yes, sir.
On the sheet that she submitted, but it's got the whole tabulation of everything. She's got the Bank of America monument sign, number four, listed as sixteen feet height and sixty-four feet.
That's the current U D O allows that. Her, her size existing is five point four feet in height and eighty-three inches wide by forty-one, forty-eight square feet.
Okay, all right. Wouldn't sure where these U D O numbers were.
Right, and then I got you, so yeah, that's.
Trying to make sure I'm thinking of the right thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, her, the U D O number shown in this column was what she and I were interpreting would be allowed for those types of signs.
That would be current with.
Current U D O, not her proposed.
Yes, yes. And then her existing, or the existing signs out there, their size, and where some of these numbers. Are coming from, the size, the height, the numbers, et cetera.
Okay.
Sorry if I wasn't clear on that earlier.
I got, I got confused with her submittal and. Proposed.
And I, that's, yeah, and there, there is some difference because look at her proposal, there's things in there I felt like we just couldn't carry over.
Yeah, there was a twenty-five foot height that didn't get carried over and which I was gonna have a hard time with.
Twenty-five foot height, yes. There are also things like, um, some of the.
Yeah.
Tenant signs, changeable panels, multi-tenant grouping, those things that I felt like just wasn't. Things that we could, we should be enforcing the code, they wanted it in the bylaws all day long.
So, what we're talking about is.
While we're mentioning that, is, will they have a master sign plan?
They don't have to do anything, but they.
Not, this would not require them to have a master sign plan to us.
Back here.
So we would be looking at it individually, so as an example, they want to come in and change out all their monument signs, the entrance signs, then we would likely see a plan of for all of them. Because they're, I can, they're not gonna do individual. But if the Bank of America wants to change their sign, the Bank of America would work with the town. On their signage and we would pull this code, see how they comply with that.
Right.
So imagine the developer or the owner would want to do some semblance of.
Masters.
While we're hiring someone, we're gonna have to do all of our, all of our signage.
All of the monument signs are owned by the Village at Sunset Beach Property Foundation Association.
So they're gonna work, probably have them all done at one time.
Now, now, do they have? I mean, technically, they're an HOA, do they have their own regulations that govern how they work?
So colors and fonts and all that stuff is in there?
There's, there's the bylaws.
Got it.
There, there's both the bylaws for the P O A. And, uh, in addition to that, um, that has carried over for as long as I'm aware. There is, uh, there used to be an appendix in the U D O that was the streetscape design guidelines. And that is what we use, uh, with the Architectural Review Committee for the P O A. To, um, make sure that colors, textures, uh, are in coordination with the overall vision of the village.
So we don't understand that part of the initiative of this U D O change is. Your hopes or the P O A's hopes to redo the signage and freshen them up, so to speak?
The impetus for this was because when we realized that one of our signs probably was nearing the end of its life. And needed, needed some work, that we couldn't do anything with it because it was not allowed at all under this rendition of the U D O. So when the U D O was updated, um, probably two-thirds of our signs became non-compliant. So this is so that we can basically keep what we got. Uh, because a lot of the monument signs are made out of materials that would be so impossibly expensive to replace them. Whereas, uh, refacing them or, you know, remarking them or just updating them, uh, would be much more convenient, but we can't do that currently. Is that, am I?
Probably some of them else.
With some of them, yes.
We've not had a specific on it, on all of them, but there's some of them probably.
So this is primarily going to refresh what exists rather than replace. That a fair statement?
I, I, for, but when it comes to the, to the, to the large monument signs along nine oh four and one seventy-nine. Those are made out of concrete and stucco and brick.
Right.
So yes, that would be my assumption. Um, granted, you know.
The wooden.
Somebody has to pay for them, so there, there's that.
Right.
Uh, but, um, but the wooden signs that are internal, Dock Street has one, the one at the roundabout. Um, those may be reconsidered for, uh, what the structure is. Um, and, uh, and this one actually doesn't even accommodate all of the tenants in the shopping center currently.
So by adding an additional sign, you would be able to accommodate existing tenants and new tenants, is that what I'm understanding?
Um, not every tenant is entitled to a sign, I don't think, on the, on the road, but, but we try and promote as much as we can. Uh, this particular sign, which is at the roundabout.
Yeah.
That is a essentially a tenant identification sign, or it's a monument sign, it's the additional monument sign. And we, um, looked at possibly having additional ones for the intent of, as you go further in, to, to be able to do that specific. But this one's specific to the shopping center, just like Dock Street has one specific to Dock Street.
Right. I mean, I'm not in love with this theme, but they are thematically consistent and I think that's what's important.
Pretty sure that's there as long as the shopping center's been there.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
We, uh, the, the current owner inherited a lot of what, uh, what's there now from when it was C Trail, when it was owned by C Trail. So a lot of this predates.
And when was that transaction conducted?
Twenty-five years this year.
So that's two thousand?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Who knew?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Kelly.
So D, we're talking about the wayfinding directory signage. Two opportunities here, one would, one opportunity are like the freestanding or monument style signage, looking at D one.
Is it wayfaring or wayfinding?
I'm calling them wayfinding. I don't know that, I, I use wayfinding down here and wayfaring on D.
I guess we should change, I don't know which ones, we don't know which ones, we know which ones are appropriate in the sign language, we can look it up.
I'm, I'm more familiar with the wayfinding.
Then we should change it up at the top then too, then, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Make that finding.
And that was just a, my neglect, I didn't catch that. So, these are things, like I said earlier, that would, in their vision would be like planetarium this way or hotel this way or whatever. But, you know, once they're there, they could put pretty much what they want to on it, just understand that. Um, so they could have. Freestanding monument style tenant directory signs up to thirty-two square feet per face. Six feet in height. And the well, the wall mounted pedestrian scale signs are some that they thought they might would have like on the side of a building that might do the same thing. Um, and then the pole wayfinding signs, we pulled this one from, uh, City of Wilmington, Mayfair, or mixed-use signage. That would allow them to have some type of a pole or post. Pole signs in general are not permitted in the town, just keep that in mind. Pole signs are based on the definition is, has to, the, the base has to be at least two-thirds the width of the sign. That's, that's, that's what we call a monument sign, so anything less than that is a pole sign. But in this instance, they could have like a pole sign that would have, um, not more than, was it six feet? Twelve feet in height and, um, twenty square feet, if they choose to do that. And no more than two per block base or permitted, they could have one on each side, you know, but like, you know, this block and this block, but no more than two. And then if they do a wayfinding signage, if it's in a pedestrian area, we need seven, you know, pedestrians can walk under it basically, seven foot in clearance. Uh, then they're not visible from roadways outside the development. Some of those standards were pulled from Wilmington.
Okay.
And working, Kelly was, and was, um, aware of the Mayfair wayfinding signs and they potentially would like to do something similar to that.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
So that's where those standards came from, a lot of working with, with her on those. Any comments, questions?
Looks good to me.
Looks good.
All right, and then wall signs, um, I think, I think this is pretty much what she applied for, or her application.
Right.
Place anywhere on the facade up to the roof line, one per facade facing a public street or internal boulevard regardless, that's the public or, that's the street.
So that, that doesn't eliminate the possibility, man, when he said, in this.
Couldn't have it on the back of the hotel.
You can't have it on, but you could have it on the side facing the residential area, right?
Well, if, 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 if the rule is public street, privateer is a private road, so hotels should not be allowed to have a sign on the back.
It says published street or internal boulevard.
Internal boulevard, privateer is not a boulevard either.
No.
So you couldn't have one on the back of the hotel?
Yeah, which I'm happy with, I don't.
What about the, what would, I would consider the right side.
Sanctuary side, so you're talking about the sanctuary side?
No, the left side, condominium side.
That's the privateer side.
Correct.
Privateer side, that's the back of the hotel, they couldn't have one there. Not according to this.
Then on the sanctuary side, there would be a piece of property between the hotel property and sanctuary. So it's not a street or boulevard, internal boulevard.
Yeah. So they can have, they can have signage up to the roof on Manta Ray.
Manta Ray and High Market.
And High Market.
So.
Two sides.
Just thinking devil's advocate, if something's, I mean, they don't actually have the frontage on Manta Ray.
Well, that's the front of the hotel, they're gonna have signage there. This, I mean, they're gonna have a monument sign.
Can you go back to the map?
Yeah, go back to the map, they're gonna have a monument sign on the entrance.
It's that where that five point two acres is, right?
Right, yes.
Yeah.
So they're gonna have a monument sign.
No, we're talking about the wall sign right now, but.
Yeah, I know, but if they're gonna have a monument sign coming into that entrance, the wall sign on the side is gonna be somewhat redundant. And we, and people are gonna know it's a Hampton and Suites. But we can't really enforce that in code, it's a public, it's a.
You got that issue with any sign, you know, any business in town's got a sign on the wall facing the street along with a monument sign out front.
Now, would that sign, do we restrict that sign in terms of it being backlit or lit in any way?
Signs, wall signs.
Well.
There's no, there's no, no requirement.
So they can light it if they want.
Correct.
But we, but we would still be under the.
Did we just split the difference in our size thing here on purpose? Cause we have two size standards, right, based on their distance from the. Main roads and our other districts, right? We have the one square foot per two linear feet and then we have the larger one, one and a half. If they're back two hundred and fifty feet. But it looks like here we just put, put it in the middle and on purpose, the one point two square foot?
Do you know what your rationale was on that? I didn't really, I didn't really.
Yeah, could we just.
I didn't make any changes on this piece of it.
Cause we went through this for the, what was it, Dollar General store, whatever it's called.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For wall signs were originally only one square foot per two linear feet of building frontage. And, and shall not exceed a hundred square feet. Which we don't have here at all.
But they get.
And then because they were so far back, we expanded our allowance to be one and a half square feet for every one feet. And two hundred square foot back from them.
But that, that distance is based on the roadway, distance from the roadway?
Distance two hundred and fifty feet, wall sign, including glass areas for building with a front setback greater than two hundred and fifty feet. It's the setback.
Well, here in the.
Which doesn't apply, which, well, it is a parcel, right?
Yeah, well, here in the mud district, I mean, that, that setback, I mean, in a perfect world. That parcel's gonna be split in half and at some point, there's gonna be additional commercial development along that roadway. So does the definition based on the roadway no longer really serve its purpose?
It's the setback.
When we, we put new commercial development between the roadway and that sign?
It's the setback, so their parcel line, they're only setback, I don't remember the numbers, they're probably setback from their lot line, that, that.
So the setback is from the lot line, not the road?
Always are.
Okay.
But so they're not, so, okay. I don't know if they're, I'm trying to remember the drawings, but you got the parking lot in front of the, so they're setback a hundred feet or something from their lot line is where the building, the facade is.
I know.
I don't know the exact figure anymore, I don't have the drawings. So, so we're saying because in that case, we're, we're, we're going up from one square foot per two to one point two. And.
And, and I don't, I don't see an issue in terms of the signage in front of the hotel facing the parking lot. I'm more concerned with the signage facing the back in the residential area. And how do we create ordinances that, I mean, we do have the lumen pollution guidance from what we just incorporated. So if it's above a certain lumen at the property line, they can't do it.
So the light, the sort of same lighting standard should start, should apply to the, to these wall sign signs, you know, right? We should just copy that line.
It's got a cramp, sorry.
No, okay.
Was it because of the lighting standard? So we can just copy that. Number six of them over there to the same. To control the, uh, lighting to their property line.
Now.
So, and I guess you have my other one comment on the wall sign, just, we're saying. Up to the roof line, that to me means exactly equal to the roof line or parapet top. And that doesn't quite seem appropriate to me, it should be a little bit below the roof line. You should see some of the facade, I just don't know how to write that other than say. I, I don't think anybody would put, and I certainly don't, and we, and I don't know. I, I don't think anybody would put, and I certainly don't, and we, and I don't know, and I don't want anything ever above the roof line or the parapet line.
Yeah.
So I, in my mind, the, the, whatever, let's just say the, the box on the wall, whether it's a box or just offset letters or whatever, there should be visible facade that a parapet top liner. I just don't know how to write that in here. I'm assuming they would probably do that anyway.
Yeah.
So twelve inches below the roof line or top of the parapet wall. Is that what I'm, is that?
Bottom, of the bottom of the parapet wall.
No, the, the top line.
Yeah, it's the top of the roof line.
So if you have, if you have, this is the, the parapet wall, your box goes just a little bit, the, the sign box, the sign, whatever you want to call it, the sign, because sometimes they're just offset letters. They don't have a box that they're in, but is, is.
You want to see a little bit of a gap from that top of the parapet wall or the, or if it's a flat, or if they don't have a parapet wall.
Like a foot down. I don't know if that's right.
Twelve inches sound reasonable.
No, wait, no, we're talking about signage being allowed on the parapet wall.
Just as written, this would allow the sign on the parapet wall, yes.
Because you can't tell the difference from the outside. You're not supposed to. You probably, you just see the wall at the top.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Whether the roof is right there or the roof is below.
As long as that's.
Below the top.
Only facing public thoroughfares and not residential communities.
No, we don't.
I think I'm okay because they, they're going to want it on the front. They're not going to want it on the back. Because there's nobody back there but their neighbors. So, okay.
Waste of money.
It'd be a waste.
Yeah, but I mean, if, if we're trying to get this as a matter of ordinance, then.
Well, it says internal boulevard. It can face an internal boulevard. So it's a private street, but privateer is not a boulevard.
Correct.
Boulevard is a main connection between.
But let's say we had.
Well, is that language?
Let's say we have the same set, the same issue in something that's adjacent to. Could we ever have that? Maybe not.
Maybe not.
Yeah. I mean, there is some adjac, no, not really.
Well, and also that's, we don't know what's going into other big parcels. There could be another multi-story. I mean, under existing code, forget the hotel. You can still put a, a fifty-foot three-story office building in there if someone chooses to do that, a medical building or something, right, too? So.
But in the future, could we have?
They might already have plans, but that's not regard.
Could we have in parcel six point six two, a four-story doctor's building adjacent to five multifamily apartments where this ordinance in terms of prevent, preventing light leakage into the residential area that's now adjacent to the four-story doctor's office? Does this by ordinance prevent that from happening?
Yep.
Okay.
Then in this case, the wall sign is limited to, in your example, Manta Ray and High Market.
Right.
Same as the hotel would be.
But in the future, were we to create a boulevard along that six points and split that six point two, six two acres and a half, one of which is residential, one of which is commercial, does the ordinance now cover that? Because now that would be a boulevard, might even be a public street.
If they created a private street that split that property north-south.
Okay.
Or, you know, ran, it ran east-west.
Right.
Then technically they could probably put something like that. But if they would have to create a street and.
And they'll have to connect to other points. And at that point, now it's, you've created more separation between.
Because the road.
And I'm, I'm, I'm a little more comfortable if, if, if you choose to live in the residential area with the signage already there, well, that's, it's not up to us to judge you for doing that.
The residential houses can be put up first and then the office building later. I mean, it can go that way. I don't know what's planned there at all, so it may.
But it is a mixed-use zoning district.
And I guess, I don't know why we, why are we using the term boulevard? Is there a definition for that?
We don't have a definition. We could, we could say.
Private road?
But private road, then that potentially opens up privateer.
Yeah, that opens up privateer then. Boulevard implies.
But we don't, if we don't imply, but we don't have a definition?
Well, a boulevard implies it's a, it's a connecting road between two existing roads.
Right.
Which that probably wouldn't be.
So do we need to clean that up a little, internal?
Connecting street.
Connector road or something like that?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm sorry to say, that's not my definition of a boulevard in my mind. My mind of boulevard is like a parkway with. I mean, so it could be where you come from, what is generally termed a boulevard or a parkway or. So maybe we should say internal connector road?
So, so will we do this? In line with that, so public street or private internal connector street or road? Connector road. How's that?
Yep. Connect the street, okay.
Well, that's not my definition of boulevard. Good.
Uh, it's sometimes geographic, geographic, whatever you call it. Just the one. Yeah. No, it's not.
California.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Oh, that sucks. That boulevard, the one in California.
Privateer does loop around.
Well, I'm not sure I want to like Google to find.
Privateer loops around.
That's a story for another.
Yeah, I'm a little worried about the connector because it does connect.
Roadway? Yeah. Can I see your map there, Ron? You said I, I, I'm not picturing the road precisely what, how it goes.
Privateer connects all the way around. It loops all the way.
Just as information, all of the internal roads are private.
Yeah.
All of them. So even though they are public access roads and privateer does technically connect. But I mean, I, I would say we, we clearly understand the intent and, and don't want to, nobody wants to make anybody mad, right? We're not. But also you can't guarantee that these guys are going to own the majority of this forever or that I'm going to be here or that any of you will be here. So I understand the, the discussion. And I'm fine with whatever definition, whatever word you want to put on it because we understand the intent.
What if, knowing there's a lot of commas, private, internal, non-residential streets?
Yeah, I think that's what we were concerned with, the residential part, right?
Right.
So that, that may get it.
Not to argue.
No residential use of the road?
Not to argue your point, but High Market does become a street that travels in front of Doc Street.
Through residential.
But not in that area, but.
Not, not at that point, right?
Is it, well, it's because there's residential on privateer, right?
Yes.
So it already has an existing residential use or access.
I will tell you this, that just a portion of privateer appears to be a parcel. Or like, like when I would say like a designated piece running north-south, which is the one beside the hotel is owned by Doc Street at Seaside Villas HOA. And then the piece running between the town homes and the other homes is not listed as part of the total.
Privateer has their own POA. Those little houses, they, they have their own POA and that POA is who is responsible for bringing that, what was a back alleyway up to standards to be a road for the postal service and every emergency vehicles and everything else. All of the other roads are owned by the POA. Including the road that runs in front of Doc Street. Privateer, to my knowledge, I'm sure, is the only internal road that is not owned by the POA. But by the Village at Sunset Beach POA.
And we definitely can't write that in the code though.
You can't write that in code though.
What if we just left boulevard type street? And if you look up the definition of boulevard, just like she did, it's a wide street with, you know, trees and the Sunset Boulevard in California.
Can't we just use roadway on that, internal roadway on that, rather than boulevard? Or just take that whole, whole sentence out there, just say facing a public street. Don't even have the or there.
Well, we don't want it to say just public street.
Because they're not public streets.
They're not public streets.
If they're going to have a public street.
We don't want them to have a sign on the back of the hotel.
Right.
Facing that street. Trying to prevent that.
Can we just say that? Not visible from a residential area? No, that would be like too much.
Yeah, that'd be too much.
Yeah.
Stump on this one.
If it's four stories up, they're all.
Yeah.
Who would say serving only residential uses? High Market doesn't serve only residential uses.
Would privateer only serve residential?
Yes.
So one sign may be proceeded, permitted per facade facing a public street or an internal.
Private internal street.
Private internal street.
That own, that, that serves residential uses, only, only residential access.
Does not serve only residential.
That does, yeah, the opposite. They're, they're allowed on a road that does not, that does not, now it's going, yeah, so. Privateer only serves resident, there's no future use of it. Do you, no.
All developed.
It's all developed. Okay. That, that may be the way to get it. So they can only permit it on a public road or?
I've, I've written, they permitted, see, facing a public street or private internal street that does not serve only residential uses.
I think that works.
That might work.
Regardless of tenant access point.
Okay.
That works.
Uh, that's it?
Any other questions on this?
Okay, so that we're going to adjust to make sure it's a foot below the top of.
Yes.
The top, one foot below the top of the top and we're going to change the facade facing the public and it can't be a res, only residential road.
And you would make to bring over the lighting.
And then I guess the last, bring the light standard in. And again, we're just settling on the, the one point two square foot per foot and just let it go at the single standard.
Yeah.
That's big enough for what they think they need.
Walls will be a pretty good size, wall linear foot on one side facing Manta Ray.
And, but also we, normally we give them a maximum limit, like it's one hundred or two hundred square feet. Do you need to add some, limit it to the two hundred square feet or something? Because on both the other one, on the existing UDO, it's, it's one foot per two, one square foot per two.
Not to exceed a hundred square feet. That's, that's one. And then the other one is one, not to exceed two hundred square feet.
Yeah, because it's one and a half square feet.
Foot.
Or foot. So that means it would be, we did this math the last time.
A hundred, hundred foot, hundred foot building would have a hundred fifty.
We were, we were concerned on the real long facade fronts that they get. That's why we put the two hundred foot limit. Should we put the two hundred foot limit there too? Two hundred square, they cannot see two hundred square feet. In other words, if you got a great, well, we had the discussion, I'm trying to remember, because you had a long frontage. So the one and a half foot gave them a higher, we wanted to give them a higher sign, but not go the whole length. So we said, well, you get the higher sign, but not more than two hundred square feet total. You get where, why that happened? So like on this building, I forget how wide this facade of this building is. The Hampton end is probably fairly wide, right? So.
My surprise.
So in other words, if it's got, say, two hundred foot of frontage, they get one point two times that. Two hundred forty. So, but.
But if it's four hundred.
Then they get one point two times, not likely to happen, but, but that's why we put the two hundred, up to a maximum of two hundred square feet in that. You get the taller, but you still can't have an area more than two hundred just because you've got a big frontage. See what I mean?
And what I was looking to see, if they had a measurement.
I remember their, their facade is broken in two, right? Because they got the entryway canopy thing in the front. And there's like two facades, left and right. But I guess the question is, is if we just apply the two hundred square foot maximum, that does it?
That should be plenty, I would think.
Or is that too much? I don't know. But that was, that was the point of adding those maxims is for buildings with long frontages, they get a taller sign that they could see from the road, but it, there's still some limit to how far you could go. Because you're still, in this case, if we're at one point two, two hundred square feet divided by one point two, your sign length is.
Well, I guess I'm concerned that.
Too much?
They wanted one point two, had they already done the math on how big the building was and how big their sign was and they needed the one point two. I don't want to cut them off if, if their sign is set up to be two hundred and twenty square feet. I don't want them.
I can pull up the regulations for that particular brand, but they'll take what is allowed. And a lot of the numbers that I came up with, like in this instance, were either from existing measurements and, but in this case, it was a compilation of UDOs from lots of different areas that had a planned unit development within it. So.
So based, I mean, at one point two square feet per linear foot, that lot, no more than two hundred feet total, that allows them a hundred and sixty-six feet of sign. That's a lot. I mean, that's, I can't believe they're.
Well, you'd be surprised how big a sign is on a four-story.
I have a picture, but they don't have the.
Well, how long is that?
They don't have the length.
But if you're looking at the front, how long is that facade? I don't think it's.
They don't have, they don't have the length. They don't have these, they don't have these measurements.
In the parking lot?
Looking at this one too.
Well, why don't we put it that way and somebody could come back to you in an interim and say that doesn't do it. Because they originally had a picture of it. If you remember, we, they took it off because they didn't know what they were doing.
Right.
So I just believe that that's, that, that wasn't anywhere near a hundred and sixty-six feet long, but.
Three hundred and forty-five.
What? Is their total building?
Length.
No, two hundred and.
If you're looking at the, if a park, it's typical parking space is nine feet wide and there's, they're showing sixteen spaces, I'm figuring they can probably put another, well, maybe not six, maybe it's twenty.
But actually, what I'm saying, Ron, you can go back to the original version of that drawing.
I have that.
And you can figure out what the intent was.
Their intent is that, but the issue is I don't have measurements of their sign nor do I have measurements of the length of the wall.
Right.
Yeah, but you don't have any parking spots in front of it.
Right. And that's what I was just doing.
And the one that they show the sign on, you can figure it out.
Well, there's no parking spaces.
There's no spaces in here is my point. So they got six, there's seven here and six and nine there. So that's sixteen and you probably got another seven or eight there or so.
It's probably six spaces, but we also don't know the height of that sign. I guess I'm just concerned, two hundred square feet is a lot for a one-story building, a two-story building. When you get to a four-story building, those signs have to be really large to project.
So, but I'm thinking we add it now. I don't think, I guess we're getting to the point where we're going to pass this or we're going to get a final version next meeting. Because I don't think anything's happening over there at the moment.
I think you, I agree with your assessment. I think you, I agree with your assessment, but probably should have a maximum.
Right.
I just don't know.
It's what's the right number, but if we, if we make all these corrections and, and bring it to us at the next meeting, if there's a rejection to a specific mathematical number, it can be changed before the final vote. What do you think?
Yeah, they're not gonna hurt.
Well, I don't think anything hap, well.
Yeah, too, is my sense. Two? I think, I got it. Eight years as an audience, I should know how to turn a microphone. My sense of mixed-use district is that wall signage tends to be somewhat more subdued, because they tend to be in a concentrated area. It's not like I'm trying to get my sign message through, I mean, cause in the case of the Family Dollar signage, which we keep, you know, that, that's all the way back. So you want somebody who's driving on the road to be able to look and say, oh, okay, that's a fam, you know, whatever, a Family Dollar.
But I think in this case, it's the same intent. They wanna be able to be seen from the two main roads, so you know where to turn. I know we're gonna have a little monument sign, but believe me, as a traveler, when you're on that highway at the exit, you're looking up in the air and a look to see where the top of that building is.
Somebody turns in off of Sunset Boulevard.
Right.
They want them to be able to see where.
So all I'm saying is, are we in agreement to set some sort of maximum, and we want it to be a reasonable and
workable.
Workable maximum. I'm proposing we stick with 200 feet now, but in the interim between a final version.
Do the math.
So, someone could say, well, we need 220, or 180 is good, or whatever, and go with that as the final number then.
Now, God forbid, somebody comes and wants to exceed what we, I mean, do they go to the Board of Adjustment? I mean, what do we do?
We could text amendment again.
I mean, they could go to the Board of Adjustment, but proving a hardship or a sign would be difficult. We could not prevent them from going to the Board of Adjustment, that would be an option.
But that's not really, so they would, they would come to us and say, we need a text amendment to amend this.
So.
So I think we wanna put the limit, and we're gonna add the illumination standards in, which I think limits the eyesore part of it.
Correct.
But we want it certainly to be seen, I think we want it to be seen from the two major roads, so we don't disagree with the owner.
Right.
But, we just wanna put some sort of reasonable top end ceiling on the sign.
And, and what you're thinking, if they were coming under the current code, or in another part of town, they would be limited to the 100 if they were within less than 250 feet, or if they were up to 200, if they were 250 feet.
Yes.
So, I think for this purpose, I think we can go with 200.
Right. Unless somebody objects, say, we really need, say, say, somebody who owns a building, or proposes to build the building, and there says, I really need 220. Then you can put, and we can discuss it at the final vote, and say, if that's fine, and if it's 220, I think probably would pass.
What I'm hearing is.
200 now, we set it at 200, and if there's some objections by the applicant, uh.
So you can let us know before we?
Right, cause I don't think, we know what anybody wants, but we might know at the moment, but we don't, I don't think we know.
Based on the language that was proposed, um, they, they're aware of it, and the applicant is aware of it uh, for, for the hotel, and they don't have any issue with it. We did not discuss maxims, but I'm sure that there's not an issue with that.
So we'll, to be consistent with other parts of the code, let's put 200.
200, and then.
And I think in terms of scale. I think.
Overuse causes the batteries to go dead, you know?
Well, I mean, if, if the hotel is fine with it, in terms of scale, that's probably gonna be the max in terms of what anybody's gonna build and signage that would be appropriate to that. So, I think Ron's suggestion is a good one. Let's set set it 200, and if somebody really feels strongly that needs to be born, let them come and make their case.
I do know that Food Lion recently redid their signage. Uh, so the sign that's on the front of Food Lion is fairly new within the last five years, maybe. Um, so I'm assuming that they applied, uh, or talked with the town at some point for that, so you could find out what those dimensions are. Um, that would be a good, cause you're probably not gonna go larger than that.
Right. So we'll go with 200.
Okay. So, I, I don't know where everybody else is, but I guess I, I'd like to, I guess, see a final version before passing out, because I think we've had some number of somewhat complicated changes here, wording that even I think Ron, too, in his head are working out. So, I don't know if there's a urgency to it that we can't address it at the next meeting.
Is there urgency?
And then the applicant also can see the final language in too.
Depending on when the next meeting is, there's, there's no immediate.
Later than November.
Urgency. The only, the only, uh, true issue that we're facing at the moment is just that we have some signs that might um, not make it through another winter, so, uh, we'll probably be looking at.
Certainly be this year, no matter what.
So we'll meet sometime in, at least.
Well, we're gonna get that later. So I think the plan is that the board agree that, well, Ron, too, will create the final language based on a number of sort of complicated wording changes here. Uh, the applicant can look at it, and then, uh, then we'll have just a final look at the next meeting, and it should be just go to vote, there, Stuart, do you think that's okay?
Yep.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
I think conceptually, we all kind of know what we wanna be, it's just.
Before we sign off.
Yeah, clearing up the, the words, the language, the numbers, if there's a dispute on a number here or there, they can, we can work that out in the meantime.
And, and that would be, no, I was gonna say, what you're saying is consistent with what, how we would treat any applicant-initiated amendment that's continued. I would incorporate the language that I believe, based on the direction you guys have provided, but also make sure that the applicant is, is aware and, and on board as well on that.
I mean, this is probably one of the most important things that we're gonna do, so I think getting the mud district right is, I mean, we're pretty much done with, in terms of the things that we can do residentially, and what's really left for us is, how do we guide appropriate commercial development in the areas that are left to us, so.
And to give Ron, too, another crap maybe. Looking at our 341 regular, non-mud standard, should like the lum, think some of that be included in that at the same time? Yep. Or not, just put that, put that in your mind a little, in other words, when we get the final language on that, is all our language on non-residential in the other section. Need any, let's just call it sprucing up, but.
Perhaps, what else I'd say, how does it fit into that zoning definition?
Right, and we could do that at the same time.
While we.
Or soon thereafter, let me put it that way, okay?
Okay, while we have this signage up and we have Kelly here, um, I'm not sure what the outcome was in terms of the sidewalks that were gonna be brought along High Market as part of the hotel build, but not being here, I was unable to express my concern that those hotel guests are gonna be faced with a half a block trudge through the tundra, if you will, absent someone building a sidewalk there. The response was, the developer did not own that property. Uh, your clients do. Uh, would they commit to completing that sidewalk? Cause it is in the best interest of the, um, businesses also in that mud district. The hotel does not have a restaurant, and so those good people who stay there are gonna wanna walk safely to the surrounding commercial enterprises where they might get a lunch, or a dinner, or a pizza. Um, can we get a commitment, or, um, that we can finish that sidewalk all the way to the existing commercial enterprises on the property that Carolina owns? You can't wait, so that's not something you'd commit to? Okay? Okay, I'm eager to hear it.
Half of that 5.28 acres, uh, or a portion actually, because it's going to be divided into three separate parcels.
Right.
Is being sold to the hotel. The part to the east or to the right of the hotel um, is a separate parcel that will remain under the ownership of Carolina Dreams Golf. Uh, however, that does not mean that Carolina Dreams Golf will not sell that to an entity that wants to build either retail or some type of business there, and we've had some discussions with different entities. If we do, we can't guarantee that that entity or that business is not going to need access off of High Market Street, which means we have then ripped up a sidewalk that we just put down. That's the only reason. I agree, the intent of the village, the entire intent of the village, and everything that we've worked on with zoning and everything we've worked on with the planning staff, um, to date, uh, and well predating me, um, has been to, uh, have a walkable district. So, the intent is there, just, uh, the Carolina Dreams Golf may own it for now, but there's no guarantee for how long they will own it.
Well, there's gonna be a year and a half before that hotel is complete, and then in the interim, there may be other players associated. I just wanted to get that on the record. I understand the issue, but, um, frankly, somebody that walks onto that street because there's no sidewalk and gets hit by a car, is, we're gonna have some liability issues. And creating a sidewalk.
But that can always be true. Sidewalk doesn't completely eliminate that either, but I, I agree with you.
They certainly would mitigate.
And I brought it up at the last meeting, as you know.
And I appreciate it.
It would be nice that that connected through, but I, there's no way for us to enforce it.
You can't.
We can encourage it, continue to encourage it, and.
Well, I just wanted this to be on the record, and I understand.
I don't know, is there, is there lighting there, overhead lighting for the road there? So there's sufficient lighting if someone is walking, is walking from the end of the hotel sidewalk to somewhere else there.
All of the internal lights, all of the streetlights are owned by Brunswick Electric, and were actually just replaced uh, to be more modern with LED lights, so they're greater coverage and brighter.
There is lighting if somebody wants, has to go out to the, well, considered a street, to walk, there will be sufficient lighting there.
Yes, and, um, and they do all the time.
Right.
So.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Ellie. Okay, so the next item is, is Ron, one initiated a discussion on the Gateway Overlay District. I sent you guys some of my notes, and I guess in my mind, this was a continuation of what we did for parking, what we're doing today on kinda enhancing the viability of the mud district, was to say why does our Gateway Overlay District not have a lot of businesses? So, I went through it, and I just found a couple areas, and actually not a lot, that I thought could help it a little bit, and then asked for everybody, everybody else's thoughts, or of course, the thought, the number one thought to be do nothing, it's all good as it is, let's move on. So, I'd just like to hear from everybody else, and uh, any particular order? Stuart, and we'll go that way maybe?
All right, can we just get one clarification? And this is for my purpose and for the purpose of anybody watching, the overlay district consists of?
It's geographically designed.
179 and 904, 300 feet from the center of the road.
But does not include?
The mud district.
The mud district, and it does not apply to single-family.
It's on page.
It's in this document.
Yeah, it's in, it's on page 48 of the staff report, yeah, on page 48, it's up in the two section. It described, it's a, it's a geographical location, which we're sitting in at the moment, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So, go across, anybody else, Stuart?
Um, yeah, so you had, um, a concern about the more restrictive standard shall apply. You know, and.
It's not consistent with the other one.
Right. So, I think I'm okay with, you know, letting the standards of the overlay zoning apply, you know, picking one, one, one or the other.
Yeah, cause that's, that's an inconsistency between, what, let me see if I got my numbers, 3.1C on page 57 of the UDO says, if the standards governing a zoning district expressly conflict with those governing overlay zoning area, the more restrictive should apply. And then over on 3.3B1D, it says, in case of conflict with the regulations of the underlying zoning district within the UDO and these requirements, the requirement of this overlay district shall govern. So, I guess I agree with Stuart. We need to, 3.1C should reflect the same.
This is in the UDO?
Yeah.
So do we want it to?
Yes, that right, did I say that right?
So do we?
You said it right.
My guess is, Ron, that you want the more restrictive language to apply.
No, you want the overlay district.
Overlay district.
Whatever it is, the overlay district.
Should apply, okay. Yeah, I think that's, that's.
I've got to, I'm, well, this is, today's the discussion only, and you guys will provide direction, and as I do, do a deep dive in, based on the direction you guys provide, just gotta keep in mind, if the overlay ends up being more restrictive.
But they already says that.
Another down zone?
It's not a down zone.
Just, is it a?
Because it already says the more restrictive.
And I don't know, I don't know if I have exactly what you sent, so that's.
That's, I emailed you first.
Is this what you emailed me like a couple weeks ago?
Yeah.
I can give you another copy if you want.
That, that gets us out of the bear trap of down zone by that length.
Cause right now, in one section, we say the more, well, we say the more restrictive should apply in the general zoning, and then somewhere else, in, in the overlay district, we say the overlay should apply. So, if, if the overlay is more restrictive, we're making no change. If the overlay is left restrictive, we're up zoning, we're allowing the overlay.
So we are.
I consider this an up zone, not a down zone.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
Right, Ron, too?
Probably.
Okay, but this, this, right.
I'm, I'm, I'm following.
Okay.
On page 60.
Wait, wait, wait.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead here.
All right, and then.
I know you got new batteries, but.
Oh.
All right, and then you had a question about the, why do we have a separate tree schedule? And I can't, I can't really answer that question, why there are two separate tree schedules. It's almost like the Gateway District.
Well, I think.
It's more restrictive.
It is.
But I don't really understand.
I think because it matched, I think that got put into our old tree standard in the old UDO, that's when, and we just copied it, and the new, we didn't change it. Is my honest opinion, my recollection with it. So, the tree schedule that's here on this page of the overlay, I believe was like what existed in the old UDO.
Copy and paste.
When created the overlay district, they just, they put it in here, cause it was an appendix maybe originally.
Cause it's like three quarters of them.
Right, so, and my guideline there is just get rid of the whole thing and say, use the tree standard that we have on. What I'm saying, it's table 35, 36, and 37?
Yeah.
So, which would be consistent trees all over.
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm good with that. Note, you had a comment in here about.
All right, can we, I wanna go back to the tree thing, for some reason, I remember red oak and pin oaks being included in this, and they're not on this table.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
That's what we're saying.
This table is not up to date, Mark.
Okay, got it, okay.
I, I propose just using our, is get rid of these two tables and just say, use our other tables.
Okay, which are, again, less restrictive.
Correct.
Okay.
I think if you don't even address the tree plantings at all.
Well, like I say, you could just permit a trees, just C table, whatever, you just take.
Yeah, but I think what Stuart was saying, though, that if you don't have it in the code, then the, the standards apply.
Then the other standards apply, so.
Whatever's appropriate.
You don't even have to mention it.
Whatever's appropriate way of doing it. My, again, I was sort of going to where Lisa was going before, if you're doing something in overlay district, let the town staff just look at the overlay just to see. let the town staff just look at the overlay just to see, and if it just refers them to the other table, they just know to go there. Sort of the same thinking as the mud, right? Because it's kind of like a mini mud almost.
Sort of, but, I mean, if, as a designer, I would have gone to the overlay district and said, okay, what are they asking me to do that's in addition to what I've already got to do? So, I would have popped down through all these bullet items, and if I didn't see any landscape, I'd say, okay, well, there's no change to the landscape.
I can
Because these are supposed to be additional requirements.
I could be had either way.
So, the only thing I could, you know, there's not a whole lot in here that's got a lot of teeth. I mean, the only thing that, that I could find in here that specifically not, I couldn't find in the code anywhere else, is the bicycle parking.
Different, yeah.
So, we have a gateway corridor overlay district for bicycle parking.
Right, which is where I brought up the item, is there any way to incentivize multi-use path there to accommodate the bicycle? And I couldn't, other than the suggestion I made, which is allowing the push, pushing back, how do we do it? And I really couldn't come up with a good way.
Yeah, I couldn't either, because we're not really
Because there's existing sidewalks there.
There's not any additional requirements to give them relief for other than the the bicycle park.
Lisa may be able to help here. Aren't we doing something on trying to get a bicycle pathway or whatever, both through there? Or, is it going front of this district?
Shoreline West.
Just Shoreline West to the park. Right, so this would be the park to the mud.
Park to the park. Sunset's Park to Calabash's Park.
Right, but basically, the overlay just starts at the circle or the park, and goes this way towards the mud. So, my thought was, is there any way to get a multi-use path there? But there's existing sidewalk already, and we may be stuck, the best we can do is the five-foot sidewalk, there's no way to get anything more than, there's the bike lane on the road.
So, I'll speak to that, in that we were supposed to be doing a land use plan update, and part of that was, I wanted to do an update to the bicycle and transportation plan, and I think we could put a 10-foot path on there for Sunset Boulevard, and then it's required.
On the properties or on the right of it?
On property, in the right of it.
In the right of it.
Anybody, anytime somebody developed a property on there, they'd have to do the 10-foot. But we, we could require it in that, that study, but we're not not doing a land use plan update, so I was kind of thinking that maybe this gateway thing needed a rewrite when we did the land use plan update. Because I read through this, and I just don't, there's just no teeth to it. I, I really, other than the bicycle parking, I don't really understand why.
Lighting fixtures in the parking lot might be a little shorter.
Yeah, I, I don't really under, it's
The color palettes.
It was created before I got here, so maybe Lisa could help on the
Yeah.
No?
It was created so long ago, I don't really remember the just of why.
But I think this would be a great time with the land use plan update to look at this gateway. I, I agree with the concept, I just don't think we have any teeth in this to, to make it look any different than the rest of the town.
Well, I think when the urban design standards were created, which applies to any commercials like 3, like MB1, MB2, kind of, whether they're on the corridor or not.
Right.
Yeah.
A lot of those standards are similar.
Yeah, well, I, I like, I like what Stuart's saying here, because for me, the land use plan is kind of a strategic overview. And the Gateway District, to me, feels a little more strategic than tactical. It's more our wish for what it would look like, rather than by ordinance, you have to do this, which is important, because
Yeah, but, yeah, the things I'm sort of looking at suggesting is not certainly not more restrictive, it's kind of being, allowing, and the last item, of course, being the color palette.
Right.
Opening, so, basically, opening up the tree schedule to our schedule, open up the color palette, open up which rules apply, which is the overlay, which is like the three easy things to do.
Right.
Which I think we could do now.
Yeah.
That opens up that area, oh, this area for more making more, oh, make the palette more palatable to development here.
Right.
I don't think we could do anything about the multi, I agree, that has to be kicked down the road, I think.
I think so.
We do require the sidewalk, I don't think we can really do anything else. I agree that, Stuart, that we probably, I just, in my vision, would still would like to see that then connect the park to the mud.
Yeah.
Is my long-term vision.
Me too.
But right now, I think the best we can do here is leave it, they're required to put the sidewalk in front, and that's maybe the best we can do here, but
For now.
You know, make the standards the overlay. Make the trees the same as all the trees, whether we put the schedule there, or just remove the whole deal, and expand the color palette, because I'm not the painter in my household, but the color palette in here, to me, even me, seemed quite boring. I mean, and I, I kicked around one, I just went online and found what's a Carolina Low Country Color Palette, is to expand it to some more bright, vibrant colors, but I can be had on that, too. So, really, what I was trying to do is brighten up the overlay just to encourage more development.
Right.
And doing a few simple things here, we can say, no, we'll kick it down the road later. I can, I'm not gonna die on this, cross on this one, but I think we can in a meeting or two down the road, at the, maybe the end of the year or something, a couple of text changes here.
Yeah.
Sort of, to me, that follows up on the parking, you know, few enhancements to encourage a little more economic development.
So, can I ask Ron and Lisa, has anybody not built a building in the Gateway Corridor District because of the color or the trees?
I've had two conversations with people potentially building, let's say along, in the, in the Gateway. I've shared the urban design standards, I've shared the Gateway standards. One of them has not come through, I think just because what I'm, they're, not sure exactly what they want to do, period. I will say that person, the, the parking seemed to have been restricted with their first idea. The other one, I believe, needed to get landlord approval ultimately for what they wanted to do, and I don't know that that ever came to, and so far, has not come to fruition. So, I've not, so I've not heard specific trees nor colors. But I will say
Not getting anybody hurt, Ron.
I will say, though, when I was meeting with the, the one, with one of them, and trying to explain the Gateway rules and the urban design standard rules, because they're both applied to that property.
Right.
To me, I wouldn't necessarily say there were conflicts, but I was having trouble figuring out how they work together. Because, in a lot of ways, they were similar, but hopefully, they were similar in every way.
Right.
Which, which I understand, like, you know
We passed, we purposely passed on that in the UDO update.
And, and what I haven't done
Because we could get, get rid of overlay district completely, but there are, I'm not sure the council likes that idea, because
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, but I think they're historically kind of tagged in the overlay district. So, when we did the UDO, we purposely said, we're going to leave the overlay district.
More about, try to get it later.
I'm proposing a little spruce up, and like you said, on the urban design standard, what I found, it's not even in the table of contents.
It's there, but it's not, it's, it's for whatever reason, it's not linked there. I think we can change online, we can make it, we can
It's not in the table of contents that I got.
Okay.
There is no 3.21. If you look at the table of contents.
Are you talking about actual table of contents?
Printed or online?
Printed.
No, you're right, it's not.
See? Even a blind squirrel finds an acorn every night.
I was looking
Because you know why? Because you told me about the urban, and I couldn't find it.
You had to Google, search it.
Yeah.
Search it, yes.
So, obviously, one of the fixes we're gonna have to do is add it to the table of contents. There is a three-section, Article 3.21. And then, again, and I just said, de-conflicted with the overlay district.
I will say
Because that's how we got to when we did the UDO, is that we eventually wanted the urban design to take over, but we weren't yet ready to say to the, we got rid of the overlay district, we thought that would throw a wrench in the works.
And what I haven't had a chance to do was side by side
Right.
to figure out where are they consistent, or where, and if they are inconsistent, where are they inconsistent?
So, my only heartburn with, I don't have a problem with changing the trees. The colors give me a little heartburn in that I'm not a color person, and then a lot of the talk in the urban design standards was complementary colors. And if we open it up to more colors that then could be paired together that might give too much contrast, they talk a lot about contrast.
Yeah.
So
I just went to what's typical commercial Low Country Carolina color palette.
Right.
And again, I'm not a color expert either.
Yeah.
But it just, and I'm not even sure that existing building over there, of course, is sometimes in the printout.
Yeah.
Meets that list, exactly.
Yeah.
There's no yellows on that list. Okay? So, I'm not sure the existing structures meet the color palette. And obviously, this is black and white, but the one I looked at included some of those yellows and seafoam greens and all that stuff, but
And I will remind you that the 904 corridor study is going on right now. We'll actually have the first public input meeting on October 14th at the community center from 4 to 6, and more information will be coming out about that with, as soon as Kimberly can get to her desk, and we can go live with that page. That may, you all will take a look at that study and approve it, recommend approval to the council. We may be able to use a lot of that to put some teeth into the overlay district.
Now, what is this public meeting?
October 14th.
For?
The 904 corridor study.
Thanks.
And that study is going from Seaside Road, Sunset Boulevard intersection to 17.
And that's, and who's doing that study, NC DRT, or who?
It is GSAT's in the town, the Grand Strand Area Transportation Study Group that we're involved with for our MPO,
Okay.
and the town partner to do that.
And where's that gonna be held?
The community center.
October 14th?
Yep.
What time?
4 to 6.
So, one last comment is, when I say comments like, has no teeth, I don't really want the overlay district to have a lot of teeth, because we're trying to promote businesses, but maybe there's enhancements.
Specificity, maybe.
Right, so maybe there's enhancements, or maybe there's other things we can do in here that help them, you know?
Yeah, mate.
Right.
No, you don't know.
Right. Right.
You covered pretty much everything I was talking about, but I agree with the, we don't want to be specific in that whole thing, you know, and how do you promote the, the growth in that area, you know?
Right.
So, by doing too much, you know, you don't want it to, someone come to develop the land, and they say they can't do it because, you know, A, B, and C, you know, so
Right, yeah, I wonder if the Gateway Corridor Overlay District typically has more restrictions. I'm kind of wondering if it has less restrictions, you know, to encourage people. But I don't really know in the town of Sunset Beach, what's the difference between the Gateway Corridor District and the non-residential develop?
That's in the urban design standards, or
I mean
I mean
179 and 904 basically cover all the commercials.
There's a, no, there's other ones.
C trailer.
There's some scattered here, there.
The other corner.
You got the, like, the urban design standards apply to DB1, as an example.
And the conditional zoning approvals that we gave to the two parcels on 179, are they in the gateway?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they'd be in there. We had that, it's in the, it's in the, because they're facing that gateway, they also have to comply.
But the parcel across the street from the Riptide offices are not.
I just went through that, I don't remember.
The parcels
I think just the ones facing Sunset Boulevard are.
Okay. Because technically, that parcel edges out on Sunset Boulevard, but the primary commercial development is internal. So, it's a bit of a
I won't hold, I won't swear to this, but I believe that's not
That's what I thought.
There could be a small percentage chance that it is, and trying to review those notes and standards is
Yeah.
difficult, but So, I mean, the other choice, which is where we were at the UDO write-off rate, is eliminate the overlay district, and then work on the unfindable section, 2.11, whatever, 3.21, and make that apply just to everything in town. We had that discussion with, when, when we did it, but we just thought that would be
Too much.
A, a little speed bump that we didn't need to throw in the UDO adoption road.
Right.
But we could, maybe after we look at the 904
Studies.
Study, is go, the way to do it is to just make the urban design standards what we want, and
Merge the two.
And there is no overlay district, your MB1 or MB2 that's along there, and you just follow that, and that covers everybody in town. So, that's the other approach.
Yeah, well, it kind of begs the issue of so little of our commercial development is that, I mean, there's the mud district, which is clearly separate. In terms of the rest of it, there isn't that much that isn't on 179 and 90. So
I agree.
To make these huge distinctions
There is some MB1 or 2 on beach, right?
Yeah.
Right.
On beach. Over on the other corner of the town.
Right, and then there's some internal commercial development within C trail, part of the conditional zoning, which would be, isn't on the gateway, and then what's on the, on the island?
And there's just not
Yeah.
I'm just not sure we need both urban design standards and
But, I, I mean, I am somewhat conflicted here, is because it is important that as people enter our town, there is a standard that improves that experience.
Yeah, to give you a consistent look.
A consistent look, and you know, we have the issue of, you know,
Because you don't
And I realize, I'm, I'm whistling in the wind here, but in the Northeast, we have an issue of, you know, construction bonds, where so, which would alleviate the situation that we have with the La Cucina issue, but I digress. Anyway, you know, how do we make sure that
Doesn't happen again.
Doesn't happen again, which seems to me to argue for more restrictions rather than less, but then, on the other hand, we don't want to inhibit. So, it's, it's a bit of a dilemma.
Yeah.
And I, and I, and I think why the land use plan perspective is, because that's supposed to be strategic guidance. Do we want to be more restrictive or less restrictive?
What's your, what's your guys' sense on where we want to go with this, so we can give staff some guidance, even though it may not be taken up until the end of the year or the first of the year?
I, I, I think in terms of this, I think it's fine, it doesn't prohibit us taking another look at this when we do the land use plan. So, I don't, it doesn't trip any box.
But do we have a stronger feeling now to either, I guess, road branch A is do some improvements to the overlay, enhancements to the overlay district now or in the short term, relatively short term, or say no, with the ideas scrapping overlay district, and just putting a general urban design standard in that covers the whole town. I certainly don't get in a fight in the council that someone's gonna say, we don't want to get greater, so, I almost want to hear from the, because those are, to me, the fork in the, well, the other fork in the road is do absolutely nothing.
Yeah.
That's one fork. The second fork, let's call it option A, is summon some reasonable enhancements to the current overlay district without removing the overlay district.
Well, the, the other
Or, or road C is delete the overlay district and make any appropriate enhancements to 3.21, the, I think I got the section right.
I think
Urban design standard, make that apply to the whole town in general.
The other layer of this that informs is, starting next year, we're gonna have a very different council. So So I think I'm more persuaded to, let's do something now to embed some standards in the gateway district per your guidance and have that in done. And then.
Yeah, we won't.
You won't have it in and done.
We won't have it done before a new.
No, we won't have it in and done.
Okay.
If it earliest would ever go to the council is January probably.
Yeah.
But anyway, I guess that's the, the, well, we're, we'll go down.
But I will say to Richard's point, to Richard's point, the council has adopted minimum standards for commercial now. So we can, the building that you all referenced won't happen again.
Okay.
Okay.
And what do you think the council would be? If, if we took option C and got rid of overlay district and went to an urban unified urban commercial design standard, you're okay with that? I have any.
That'd be.
New guy.
In terms of what you're talking about.
Anything.
I, I don't feel, I know enough to say, yeah, let's do away with overlay or replace it or wait for the land use plan. So which, you know, of those forks in the road you want to take, I don't feel qualified to really say a whole lot. I will say, sitting here, I've been thinking, I'm very impressed with the details that you guys go into. I mean, this board, I mean, you scrutinize every little thing, which is good. And it seems like you always are looking for what's best for Sunset Beach, whether it's the business district or it's the residential. So very impressed, learning a lot. You know, I'm so new, I just haven't learned, you know, where the mud district is and where this is.
Did you give them a big zoning, a zoning map? You have a zoning map?
Have a zoning map?
No.
Did they give you one of these?
So anyway, I don't have that. No.
Okay. Can we make sure you guess one?
It's the last one I got. I don't know how, probably not new, probably changed. Was it maybe we all need updated zoning map?
That probably be good.
But it's indefensible to figure out where things are at by the color code here.
We're still waiting for GIS to get everything right, you know, with the conditional zonings and Logan homes and all that. And as soon as they provide you all with.
All right, great.
And I don't have the 2017 land use plan.
That's on the, that's on the website. Kimberly, can you?
Yeah, Kimberly can make one.
But anyway, I've enjoyed listening to this and.
Glutton for punishment.
Yeah, but I've still got a lot to learn too. Yeah.
So I don't know for, I guess for staff now, I think my.
So Ron, too, made a comment, I heard, overheard. Said, maybe we ought to do a side by side of the gateway corridor and the urban design standards and just kind of know what, what differences are before we launch into, you know, one of these forks in the road.
And if I can add that to, whatever we do, enhancements, non-enhancements, particularly if we, any changes we make, got to make sure that they do not conflict with that definition of down zone. So I've heard enhancements, enhancements can be viewed a couple of ways. I've heard the term stricter. So what we can't do is take anything that's going to be, that's, when the part of the definition is create any type of non-conformity or land, on land, not in a residential zone.
Well, I kind of feel like Ron's.
As part of the definition.
Update gets us out of that bear trap. I think I'm, I'm more persuaded now that that's the fork in the road.
Some, some of the things I've heard him mention specifically, I think probably that's true. But as we look and we start making changes and we want to, you know, but let's require, we got to be careful in my requirement, anything more strict is what I'm getting at than what is currently there.
No, we're kind of.
And Mike, when you and I have talked, Kevin, I don't think you and I have talked much about this either, you know, we'll, there's things I need to let you know statewide, kind of what we can and can't do and those kind of things.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
Based on what we know today, because it could change tomorrow.
So I guess, I guess what I'd like to maybe say is, yes, I agree, we've got to compare our urban design standards to our existing overlay or our existing overlay with a few of the enhancements we seem to be on consensus to be kind of okay with. The sidewalk thing is out. So see how that would work out.
I can certainly take some of the conversation of the day and fix some of the, not fix, but provide what I believe I heard, side by side, depending on what we may need to remember. That may be a little more difficult based on some of the other things.
But I would recommend that the planning board itself do the side by side.
Oh, what plan?
Yeah, well, I already noted in my email a few things that are not the same.
Right. Won't take long.
Yeah, roofs was one that I saw.
Yeah. So I wrote, in my list, at the bottom of my email, there's a few things where I say deconflict. That's what I kind of meant.
Right.
Where I found areas where there's some differences. So I think, I forgot, I just put my file away. I think it was what roofs, the color, the color palette's the same, Mike.
Color, facade, roof, and wherever possible.
Yeah, that's.
I didn't know what that meant.
That meant, anything I missed.
Yeah, but I.
I think the big thing on roof, I think on the, on the roof thing was the urban design standard says no flat roofs. And the overlay district does not.
Right.
So that may be the wrong direction. So that may be something we can't do.
But if you, but if you put in, but if we change the conflict where it says the urban or the overlay district shall apply.
Right.
Then a flat roof would be permitted in the overlay. In my.
That's the things you got to think through clearly.
Yes, that's why I have a committee.
But I guess the main thing is I think I want to keep momentum going on enhancing non-residential parts of town because it seems like the residential parts don't need any help. They seem to be popping up on their own. And other than people actually hammer nails into wood.
Maybe.
But I think we need a little more business and services close by. Well, helps the tax base and makes it more enjoyable if you're close by. So, and of course, as we talked about in the land use plan, getting around town by bike, walking or e-bike or whatever. So I kind of wanted to at least keep the thought process and momentum going on that. It's easy to keep, we can push it off to April if we want.
I'm, I'm persuaded by that perspective. I mean, I was surprised when I looked back on the land use plan in the survey, 90% of people wanted more restaurants. 40% wanted a hotel. Since 2017, in terms of additional restaurant plots, we've added two. That needs to change. How we do that, open to all, all options.
Some of these changes, it might seem small incremental, but incremental, in my mind is we keep the ball rolling, moving forward. And then, of course, if Ron gets a person coming in and asks a specific question, then you know, something to might address. Okay, let's, everybody's good?
Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay, next item, where am I at the right place here?
I'm right.
Administrative comments, the couple, the couple of things that I, or the one thing I seen on table 3.3, Ron, this is small, I know you don't think, on page, on table 3.3 on page 97.
Is this the UDO?
Yes. The, the note four is in the wrong column. I noticed it actually last meeting, the height.
Where, I'm sorry, page number again?
97.
97. What are you talking about now? The little four, the red four in the bottom of that table, it's in the setback column. It should be over to the right one column because it applies to the height. I don't know if we need to do anything formally or you just need to fix it.
Yeah, mine is formatted different. So I don't, I don't have page numbers. I only have.
Just to fix.
You can just fix it.
Okay, 3. what?
We're on table 3.3.
A little different.
Which is in article 310, dimensional request, dimensional requirements table. The last item is the mud. And it was the height change that we made from 50 to 60 for hotel. It's in the setback column. It's not in the height column.
Got to put it in the wrong column.
Yeah.
Pretty sure it was correct on the ordinance.
It might have been. So I just bring, we did what we needed to do, but I just noticed that was really not.
Yeah, zoning.
Right. And the next item is, again, we're, I actually talked about would be unless administrative got any more scheduling. What are we doing on the next meeting? I probably won't be here on 11/20 for that meeting. So Stuart can handle it if he's going to be here.
I'll be here.
Okay. But I don't know, what are we doing? Their next scheduled meeting would be October 16th, but I don't think we can do that, right? So was there?
We won't have anything ready to bring back to you that quick.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Sorry. It's there. I unmuted myself. I thought, I muted myself. I'll be out of town October 16th and Wes, who could, if he was available, be able to fill in, but he's going to be out of town as well.
And I'm out of town as well.
If we push it back a week, does that help us?
No.
What if we did like the second week in November?
We have a meeting scheduled for 11/20. So we're just going to, we're going to cancel the October 16th and just do the 11/20 meeting, which I will not probably, probably not be here for. That's all. So make sure we have a quorum, we have a new members. So it's easier to get to the quorum now.
11/20, well, right now scheduled, I know you, what if we moved it? Right now for November, we potentially are tracking Lumina Fairway site plan. That's going to be one of the C-trail conditional zoning district areas. They've been submitted for TRC. They go TRC next week.
Which?
Uh, subject area 13, I think it was. It's one of the C-trail conditional up there towards the.
The champions.
Champion.
Champion, champions.
So I guess I was planning on going to the TRC meeting.
That's next week.
But I won't be here, probably won't be here for the 20th. So Stuart, you want to come to the TRC meeting also? Are we allowed to have two of us?
Hmm, it's fine. No rules for TRC.
No, we can never be together more than two. So we can have.
Yeah.
So that meeting is the.
It's next Thursday, 10 o'clock, I think.
Now, on November 20th, we will know the results of the election in which I am a candidate. If elected, am I allowed to serve on November 20th until I'm sworn in, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I, Ron, I was just trying to, so potentially that site plan, if everything tracks like they think it will, we may have the park.
Majestic.
No.
Majestic.
I don't think, we'll have Majestic.
Okay. All right. So then I have.
I'm waiting on the tree board. So we may or may not.
So can you invite, invite Stuart to the TRC meeting and send him all that stuff?
Yes, we'll definitely have the mud follow up. It's Ron. You can provide me your feedback. You'll have it ahead of time.
But I think.
There's another, there's two other site plans that are out there that I'm working with folks on, whether or not, at this point, I do not know whether they have to come to this board because I don't know how much impervious surface they're showing. Major site plans are based on the pervious surface. If they are 10,000 or more, their major site plan, they come to this board if they're under that staff has administrative approval. And I say, both of them have potential to reach that, but I'm not sure by investor engineer to tell me how much. That was one of the comments that I've provided in my completeness reviews of those.
So just for, just.
Well, park was one of them already, but no, that was, park was one of three that I've had that question on.
So just to be clear, the conditional zoning that we will now receive a plat for is the champions, additional champions.
It's the multifamily buildings, 100, 105 units or something. I forget the exact number.
Now, is that the one that borders the north entrance to C-trail or is that the one that's back?
Yeah.
That's why I don't know it.
Okay.
I know. I can show you after the meeting. I can show you after the meeting.
But it does not include the hotel or any of those.
This is strictly multifamily, 104, 105 units. I don't, but you will have to compare it to the older code. They are, they're under the old.
Compared to what?
They're under the old code, not the new current code.
There's dirt there now.
I thought they.
In C-trail?
CZ, they're the old code.
Convention Center.
Trees and everything else.
I thought they agreed to abide by the new tree type rules.
No. They abide by the tree rules we gave them at the time of signing that agreement. And it's in, the way I found it all, it's in the document section on our website.
Archives.
You got to go to the document archives and you will find all the C-trail.
And that's where I found it too, Ron.
Conditional zoning stuff. It's somewhat difficult. So you got to go back to the old UDO.
I will make it easier by providing you that information, but when I, when you, when the plan comes to the planning board, I will, I will do the fishing for.
So on the trees, just so everybody knows now, when, when that conditional zoning was approved through the planning board to the council, we were in the process, if you remember, redoing the UDO. So what they agreed to was our section of the new UDO at the time that we approved that. So I guess in your mind, there are a few subsequent changes to that section that they are not responsible for, but it does look like to me they are adhering to.
Okay.
Because I've kind of reviewed the plans already. It looks like they're adhering to the UDO as it exists now, but their base requirement is as the documents were given to them as a condition. If you go to the archive and find that for each little section, this is 13D maybe?
Something like that.
13D, you can see the ordinance and the conditions that apply. And it's extremely confusing.
It is.
Because we got to go back in time to the old book.
And I wasn't here when any of that was done and it's been.
So like that thing references a section of the UDO, 306 maybe, the U standards for multifamily. So it's not this book. You got to get that section out of the other book.
Well, I'm more concerned about the tree abatement issues because that to me felt like a pretty strong commitment they made while we went through the conditional zoning process.
And it does have like a crosshatch area of protected area that's there. My first review, I don't think I had a, I think they're doing the land, the trees and landscaping correctly.
I've, I've had some conversations with them.
You'll have to get Stuart a copy of that if he's coming.
Because my understanding is they're already clearing out some of that area back there. So I don't know.
I'm not aware of that.
Well, that's something I got privately communicated to me by someone who lives back.
We could discuss that.
Could be the golf course.
Is the fairway right there? What, that number 17 or number 11 fairway? It's on the drawings. Goes up along that edge of that property. So there could be fairway there.
Okay.
There's a squiggly line where the fairway ends and the property begins. So, okay. So I guess I'll turn it back to you guys. We're canceling the October 16th meeting. 11/20 is on with a list of issues to attend. Stuart will come to the TRC meeting because it's 80/20.
Meeting is when?
You, so only two of us can go.
It's Wednesday, next Thursday.
Next Wednesday.
You can't go, Richard.
You can't go.
Why not?
I'm sorry.
You can't.
Can't have more than two of us.
Can't have more than two of us.
In a meeting.
Okay. Anything else from staff? I guess maybe the one question that Stuart's going to have is where we stand on land use plan?
You read my mind.
I did. Well, it's a little rooster on the back of your head there. I can see it. Sort of holding it.
The RFP is out. It's due back October 20th. Is that right? I think it's October 20th. Hopefully going to the council in November for them to choose the planner. That'll be due.
So at 11/20 meeting, there may be directions on it.
Yes. Yes. 11/20, I should be able to tell you who, or you'll know 11/3 if the council awards that project.
Very good.
Anything else administrative?
I don't think so. Unless you have any questions.
I have a question. So do we have a formal way of changing meeting dates? I mean. I mean, I've been on this for almost two years and usually we talk about it, just like we did today about changing or, but the September meeting just got canceled and I never understood why or.
We didn't have any items for September. The only item would have been the signs. And they did not, they were not in position before then. So I talked with Ron, in this particular instance, we were potentially pushing it for the 16th. But I knew I was going to be out of town.
Right.
And Wes was not going to be available. At the time, I wasn't sure, at least we weren't, at least, so Ron and I communicated and I said, what about the following week? It'd have been what, the 23rd? And Ron, I think you said you would be out of town. So could we not split it? That's kind of where October 2nd came from.
Yeah.
And normally.
Normally we just want to stick to the regular schedule if we can.
But normally in those instances, if, if it would have just been at staff level, we would have sent you all an email saying there are no agenda items and September meeting is canceled. But then when we got into that the Ron wasn't going to be available on the 16th and I wasn't going to be available on the 16th, that's when the conversation then happened between those two. At some point in that conversation, one of you two should have communicated with everybody else.
I was going to say.
So there was the breakdown.
We should have all been involved in that.
I thought you all were, but.
No, I.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't hear about it.
I thought the point was we were going to, I can't think of the word that was used. We're going to check with all the other members. That date was good, but.
First I heard of it was when Kimberly sent her welcome email to Mike and said, our next meeting is October 6.
I thought the plan was to poll.
I'll take the blame on this. I'll take the blame on it.
I thought the plan was to poll the other numbers first.
I'm just trying to figure out, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's how the process should work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because for me, it's, even though I'm available today, I was out of town and then couldn't get the agenda until later. And, you know, it's just, I spend a lot of time going through this stuff. So.
No, we appreciate that.
Planning board week, I try and schedule, you know, a bulk of time that week because sometimes if we get site plans or whatever, it's a lot of work to go through all that. So, but if I've got stuff scheduled already and then y'all move the meeting to the day after I've got all this stuff planned and.
Well, the rule, the rule is, should be, what the plan was, whenever there's a, a date considered, that's not the regular schedule, we should poll all the members to try to get a consensus of a quorum, hopefully all. But if we just get a quorum, we may decide to go with that. And so we got to get a consensus of the quorum, I guess. And to poll the members preferably a couple of weeks in advance, usually.
Okay.
So hopefully that'll be our only hiccup.
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't had a problem in two years, so.
Okay, nothing else? And any staffs all good and everything?
I mentioned council did approve the parking amendments.
Oh, yeah, I printed it off their website or their.
Your work was approved by council.
My, my, I printed that off.
Much discussion, you know.
Okay, barring anything else, any public comments? Hearing no public comments. I need a motion to adjourn.
I saw move.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.